Is this working? Good evening. It's 7:00. If you could be seated, we will. Actually, you can stay standing. We're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance first. We're going to get started. Stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, good evening. Welcome to the Bloomfield Township Zoning Board of Appeals meeting of March 12, 2024. As a brief introduction, the Zoning Board of Appeals is a seven-member quasi-judicial body appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees per the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Matters pending before the Zoning Board of Appeals are decided on a case-by-case basis. Any appeal of a decision made by the Zoning Board of Appeals is subject to Circuit Court review. Each case will be called separately in the order shown on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity for public comment at one point during each case. All persons wishing to comment will be asked to provide their name and address at the podium. Address your comments to the board, not the applicant or other members of the public. Given the number of appeals tonight, please make your comments brief. Comments by the Neighborhood Association will be considered as part of the factual information presented to the board, but those comments are not the determining factor for approval or denial. Please confine comments to the specific requests before the board. For a request to be successful, an affirmative vote of at least four members present is required. We hope this provides you a better understanding of what you can expect at tonight's meeting. Thank you. So, let's take attendance.
So noted.
Okay, I'll need a motion to approve the minutes from February 13, 2024. By motion and support, any discussion? All that's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. I'd also like to let everyone know that Item 11, 1914 Long Lake Shores Drive has been removed from the agenda and will not be heard tonight. So with that, we'll call the first item. That's Item 1T3930 Devon Gables Court. Is the applicant ready?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tom Ryan. I'm the attorney for Mr. and Mrs. Samoa, the owners of the property. My office address is 2055 Orchard Lake Road, Sylvan Lake, Michigan, 48320. So, thank you again for hearing us tonight. I was not with you approximately a year ago and two days on March 14, 2023, when this matter was first before you. I do want to report that there have been several changes made to the plan, which I'll outline as follows. First of all, we're no longer seeking permission for a security booth on the Mystic Valley frontage. Secondly, the landscape fence height has been lowered to 4 feet pursuant to the ordinance requirement. Also, the perimeter wall and gates from Long Lake Road into Mystic Valley have been lowered to 5 feet. The height of the attached gazebo has been lowered 4 feet, and additional screening has been added at higher elevations to ensure maximum coverage. This proposed development will be less dense than if there were three separate lots, which this was at one time, for three separate houses, three separate pools, three separate accessory structures. And the importance of this plan, we think it provides a cohesive and comprehensive plan for the entire lot to provide maximum screening for the neighborhood, and many of these plantings have already occurred on the property. So, this is a textbook case, in my opinion, respectfully, for practical difficulty. And we all know a practical difficulty is whether the compliance with the strict letter of restrictions governing areas, setbacks, and frontage, et cetera, would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or render conformity with such restrictions unnecessarily burdensome. Whether the grant of the variance would do substantial justice to the applicant, as well as to the property owners in the area, whether relief can be granted in such fashion that the spirit of the ordinance will be met, and that public safety and welfare is secured, and whether the request is self-created. So, in this case, the specific facts are: This property, for practical difficulty, is surrounded by three different streets. In other words, it's all front yards all the time. The only backyard they would have would be to the east, which is the Chase Bank and the brick wall there, but so there is no area under your ordinance for front yard structures, because of the three streets. That is, Long Lake Road, Mystic Valley Drive, and Pembroke. So, that's the first practical difficulty, significant. Secondly, we have a topographical issue, that there's approximately a 30-foot drop-off from the east to west, and north and south, from the hill or mound where the existing home was before it was purchased by my client, and that drop-off, in other words, renders all the area toward the neighborhood to the west, where there are areas to put accessory structures. So, again, rather than having three separate lots with three separate requests, by purchasing all the property, we can provide a comprehensive and cohesive plan of development to take advantage of the existing perimeter screenage, which is extensive, and enhancing that to maximize the availability of the screening for the neighbors. So, we've made numerous improvements to the plan. Again, as I stated, and I'll just list a couple more, we've moved all the fences and walls after discussion with the township, with the neighbors, and with the township administration. All the walls and fences have been moved 8 feet inward from the lot line. So, this allows us to put evergreen screening in front of the walls and/or the fences, so the adjacent properties will be screened from these perimeter walls and/or fences. Because of the size of the property, and because it's one owner, we have the ability to use some of that property for the benefit of the neighborhood to screen even the walls and the fences by putting it inboard by 8 feet and allowing the screening to go in front of it. They'll show my sidekick here. I'm kind of an analog person in a digital world, but Mr. Anna Martial will be helping to meet, not Vanna White, but he'll be showing the photographs for me tonight, so to help, hopefully, aid in this. But now, we've also added to the, already to the green, evergreen wall surrounding the property, we're adding more trees, more evergreen trees, to screen the adjacent properties inboard, and you'll see as we go through the specific plan, we've also added inboard, again, of the property, at different levels, other screening, so that as, where are there specific uses which require more screening, it'll be terrorists, so there'll be more screening behind the screening on the perimeter, which will enhance the ability of the neighbor to be screened from the property, and that the first row of evergreens along all the major roads are 1 to 3 feet higher than the street, and the rest of the evergreens will be higher than that as we go through it. We'll talk about it. So, and by this enhanced landscaping, as being the closest property to Telegraph Road, I think will provide more screening and ambient noise reduction from adjacent Telegraph Road. I want to repeat, and I want to stress respectfully, that what I say tonight is that none of the accessory structures we're asking for are incompatible with any accessory uses that has been granted to other property owners in Bloomfield Township. There's nothing here that hasn't been approved before. We've got pools, we've got gazebos, we've got a pool. As I said, we have, nothing here is going to be untoward, and it hasn't been approved before. So, I'm going to break down the variances into six categories. First, we'll discuss perimeter fence, walls, gates, and these structures are normally for backyards, but this is our backyard, practically speaking, but for the township's purposes, it's front yard, as I indicated. Second category will be pool, cabana, and amenities. The third will be site amenities, fountains, and a garden gazebo. Fourth will be retaining walls. Fifth will be the sports court, and sixth will be attached gazebo. Now, with the help of Ms. Bibby, I took the liberty, I numbered the notice of hearing, 1 through 12, because what you received and what the public got was 12 bullet points. So, I've numbered those 1 through 12, and as I go through each of these six categories, I'm going to specifically refer to which bullet points they refer to, to hopefully help move this along, and for clarity for everyone involved. So, with that, we'll start with Category 1, the perimeter fence, walls, and gates. And this is bullet point 1, 2, and 8. So, first of all, because this is a front yard, we need a variance to construct a fence, as I've already indicated, because this is a front yard, and fences aren't allowed in a front yard in the township. So, we'd like to construct a 4-foot fence for security and for the pool issue, from Mystic Valley all the way around to Pembroke to attach to the adjacent commercial properties, a wall, brick wall. Reason for this is for security, and because the pool requires a fence. Secondly, we'd like to put a 5-foot landscape wall, and this is, so it would require a 1-foot variance, and that would be for security purposes and for architectural features along Long Lake Road going west to the Mystic Valley entrance to the driveway, extending just a little bit beyond that when it picks up with the perimeter fence. So, this is consistent with other walls. A heavily traveled Long Lake Road is for security. Again, it'll be inboard of the property by 8 feet, so hopefully it will not be seen because it'll be heavily screened. Next, we're asking for an entry gate on Mystic Valley. We need a variance to construct this because it's a structure in the front yard, and we'd like to, we've shown the two entry gates, one in and one out of the driveway, and we'd like to put a 5-foot, .5 aluminum stone pier to anchor those two gates. So, that is, and that's covered, again, in number 1.
Are they illuminated or non-illuminated? Because what I see in the packet is something illuminating.
Well, there's, right now, we're showing illumination above the top of the gate, ma'am. And we took out the security booth. Next would be a secondary gate along Long Lake Road where the old Devon Gables Road was. That's for security purposes. The gate, we'd like, again, we'd like a 1-foot variance to make it 5 feet, and this would, that's the remote part of the property. We'd like to have that as a security feature, because there's, that's toward the, that's the very end of the property, and if it's needed for some kind of reason, it would be security or emergency access, but we'd like to put that there at the end of the property. It really won't affect anybody, but it could be useful if there's some issue with the property in question. And it's on the Long Lake frontage. Again, that'll be inside, 8 feet inside the property line, and it'll be screened. So, those are the categories for those bullets relative to the first-issue category, perimeter fence, walls, and gates. And does anybody have any questions, Mr. Chair? Would you like me to continue?
Please continue. Thank you.
Okay. So, the second area we're going to look at is the pool, cabana, and amenities. And this is underheading 3, 7, and 12. So, again, this isn't a front yard, so we need a variance to put these structures within the front yard. Secondly, that none of the maximum heights of the amenities will exceed 4 feet, which is a requirement any ordinance for accessory structures. They cannot be over 14 feet high, and these will not. Within the setbacks, within the 40-feet setback, there'll be additional evergreen screening, not only at street level, but there's going to be a retaining wall shelf, which is shown in that triangle box there, to further screen from the street these uses. And the, some of the features we're asking for in the pool, again, have been approved in the past. It's a rock scape, lazy river, fire pit, a waterfall, a slide with a maximum height of 6 feet, and the pool areas proposed to be screened with 8x10-foot arborvitae to further screen the pool from the adjoining properties. That, and I also should add, with the cabana, the cabana is not over 14 feet tall, and number 12 talks about the mechanicals for the pool, and the mechanicals will be in the, below the cabana and not outside to be seen by anyone else. So, it'll be, that'll be inside the cabana area. So, we do not need to put that outdoors to be screened. They'll be screened because they'll be inside. So, that would cover, Mr. Chair, the pool, cabana, and amenity portion.
So, Mr. Ryan, you showed us pictures of some of the trees. What's the height of the trees?
There's different levels, if I could just point that out. So, we have some tiered levels, which would be, we're specing like 10 to 12-foot arborvitae on these levels. We've begun to install evergreen spruce, Norway spruce, along the road. We showed a picture of that, and those average from 16 to 20 feet so far.
And if you've been by the site, it was already heavily treed before we got involved, and now it's even more so. Any other questions, sir?
Nope.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, thank you. So, now I'm on 3, the site amenities, the fountain and garden gazebo, and this would be Category 6 and 10. So, the garden gazebo is along Pembroke Road. Again, it is more than 40 feet from the lot line. It is non-illuminated, and this is not visible to anyone other than the homeowner. And then, that's the garden gazebo. And then, secondly, is on the far easterly side of the structure, where the front entranceway is, next to where the bank is and whatnot, we would like a variance to put a site fountain on that frontage for the entryway for the home. That would be a maximum height of 12 feet, so it would not be over the 14-feet requirement, and it was an entry feature. It would be not visible from anybody other than the homeowner and his guests, his and her guests that are arriving, because it's, again, on the far eastern part of the property and behind the residence. So, that, unless there are any questions, that would take care of the two requests for the garden gazebo and the site fountain. So, next, we have the retaining walls. So, these retaining walls are on the north side of the property. The necessity for the retaining walls is the topography, because as the house is on top of the highest point of the property, we need to hold the foundation for the home and also to establish a parking lot. So, this is, we're asking the permission and variance to construct a 2-tier masonary retaining wall, to comply with the ordinance requirements, that the retaining walls be screened at least by 75% by evergreen screening. Each of the tier will be a maximum of 9.6 feet, and they'll be at the back of the garage or the northerly part behind the house. There's also requesting for a single-tier wall of 5 feet to kind of round out the foundation, to hold that, hold the foundation and hold the dirt there on that side of the house. Both of these 2-foot, both of these retaining walls, that is, the 9.6 retaining wall and the 5-foot wall, will be screened per the ordinance with evergreen screening, and this is, again, this is necessary to hold the bank, to allow a parking lot to be put in, a parking area, I should say, behind the garage. Parking behind the garage. And these both are structural components of the foundation of the home because of the topography issues. So, next, I go to the sports court. So, this is permission and variance request. That's where it's located, for an 80x48-foot sports court with a 10-foot nylon, black nylon fence. This sports court does not have any common boundary with any neighbor, is within the setbacks, and evergreen screening along Mystic Road, and additional evergreen screening, as shown by the plan, to be elevated on a retaining, elevated retaining wall, again, to screen this further from the neighborhood. There'll be no illumination on the sports court. It is a minimum of 300 feet from the nearest neighbor, and there, you know, are many sports courts in Bloomfield Township, and we don't believe, you can see the dimensions there, where it is on the property and where the homes are, so we're not trying to affect anybody else. We're going to have advanced and enhanced screening for the sports court, so we're requesting a variance to put the sports court in that location with the enhanced screening.
So, there were some of the comments from the neighbors, and I went out and looked at the site. Was there any consideration to putting the sports court closer to Long Lake in that open area?
Yeah, there was, sir. Unfortunately, if you could get to the... So, the Long Lake Road area, which is on the south there, you know, that's, it's remote from the home, and they have younger children, and so they don't want to have it there because it's too remote from everything else that's going on in the area. They like to use that area in the middle of the property for their amenities, and that's why that we've considered Long Lake Road. That's also the lowest point on the property, and so the runoff will come down there and could affect anything that gets placed there other than landscaping or plantings. So, yes, we did, we didn't ignore it. It's just, it's not going to work for the family and for the plant.
So, the lowest point of the property is on the Long Lake side?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Well, I would just say, if we're going to put a sports court there, that can exacerbate any flooding, so I'll just put that on there.
Say that again, Stephanie?
If we were, if the proposal was to move it on the outside, but if there's already flooding and that's where the retention is, if we replace the grass and the soil with an impermeable surface, that can exacerbate flooding in that area.
Yeah, okay.
The gentleman has the floor.
Yeah, so, you can't have any comments from the public yet. I'll open the public hearing. So...
Should I continue?
Yep.
Thank you, sir. So, number 6 is, and lastly, is the attached gazebo. This is to the home, and initially, so we need a permission and variance height request for the gazebo on the rear entrance. Initially, when the plans were first submitted to township, this was attached along that balcony there to the house, and it was, the township building director directed us to remove it and have it as an accessory structure. So, in doing that, it's taken off the building plans for the building permit, and so it's been lowered from 38 feet to 34 feet. It looks like, and it has the same look as an architecture, as the main structure, but it is lower than the main structure, and it's difficult. Obviously, we can't screen it, so we tried to lower it some, and so that would require approximately a 20-foot variance from 14 feet to 34 feet. And again, that was initially on the plan, but was taken off at the township's direction. And that, that's towards the pool area, so that's why it was in that location. So, that's 1 through 6.
So, because I know you very carefully numbered, could you just run through, because I think you did it for, let's see, Items 1 and 2. Could you give me the numbers for the rest of the categories?
Sure. Sure. So, I'll start with the 1. The perimeter fence, walls, and gates was 1, 2, and 8. The pool, cabana, and amenities was 3, 7, and 12.
Got that.
The site amenities and fountain and garden gazebo were 6 and 10. The retaining walls were 11. The sports court was 4, and the attached gazebo was 9.
Okay, very good. Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Ryan?
So, the piers are illuminated or non-illuminated?
Well, they're showing as illuminated.
Do you know if that was noticed properly?
It was noted, noticed as non-illuminated.
So, if we're going to prove it, it'd have to be non-illuminated?
That's correct.
Could you identify where number 5 is in your presentation?
That should be, that should be number 1, I think, gates.
You said 1, 2, and 8. Does that include 5, then, or?
Yeah, it does. I'm sorry. Thank you. That should include 5. So, the two entry gates on Mystic Valley. So, thank you for that. So, 1, 2, 5, and 8.
So, Patty, as I understand it, because of the way it was noticed, we wouldn't be able to approve the illumination on any of the piers?
That's correct.
Okay.
One more, number 12?
Yeah, oh, number 12, that's the pool. That's the mechanicals for the pool. That's, that's number 2.
I'd go to 2.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You said 3, 7, 12.
Good, got it.
Correct, yes. I hope that was helpful.
Thank you.
Good catch.
Any other questions of Mr. Ryan?
The mechanicals for the pool are underground. Is that right? Under the gazebo?
They're, I don't know if they're underground. They're under the gazebo, though.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, it's like a multi-levelled gazebo that has the mechanicals underneath?
Yeah, but it's only 14 feet high.
So, they're just in the gazebo?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. But it's still 14 feet high only.
I'm sorry, is there, you have a question, or?
I was just telling him that we were questioning which gazebo it was.
Got it. Okay. Got it. You were supplementing. Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Ryan? All right, so I'll open the public hearing. Who here would like to speak on this matter? Could you raise your hands? All right, so, to organize this, let's start with this side first. So, we'll go with the front row back, and then we'll go this side back. I'd like you to come up and, you know, give your name and address, and I'll need your help, because typically, at the trustee meeting, we allow people about 3 minutes, and they run a timer. I prefer not to do that, but when you're at the end of that time, I'll give you a warning, because there's quite a few people here who like to speak, and we want to make sure everyone's heard, but we also need to make sure the comments are on point. So, if the first member of the public would like to come up, give us your name and address.
My name's Stuart Levenbaum. I'm an attorney, and I'm actually here representing Larry Smith. My address is 2701 Troy Center Drive, Suite 450, Troy, Michigan, 484. And Mr. Smith resides at 3860 Mystic Valley, which is right across the street from the front yard of this house. And so, Mr. Smith has owned this house right across the street for two separate times. Bought it, he sold it, and he bought it back. He loved it so much. And what he loved about this neighborhood, it's a very quiet, harmonious neighborhood. And what is currently being proposed is seeking to disturb the quiet harmony of this neighborhood. No one, I grew up out here. I went to Andover High School. I went to junior high and elementary school out here. I moved out here in 1971. I've never seen a pool in the front yard of anyone's home. That's not consistent. No one's ever, I've never seen that before. I've never seen somebody put a gazebo or a sports court in their front yard. That That, that doesn't exist in this community. This is a substantial deviation, and it's a deviation by design. If, Mr. Henry, I know you went out to the site. I wonder if you noticed the sign that DeRozier put up on the site? It shows a picture of the pool in front of the house from day one. They put the sign up before they broke ground. They had the pool up there. Please continue. It was by design that they were going to put this pool there. They could have taken and put in that, put, moved that residence and put that residence. Mr. Gittleman, you're a builder. You know that DeRozier knows, they know the code, they know the zoning ordinances, they know where they can place a house and have amenities, and they know amenities go in the backyard. They don't go in the front yard. This was a, a, the variance was necessitated by design. They could have easily put any, any amenities they wanted. And what they're seeking here, this is not a single-family residential amenities. They're putting the type of amenities you put it for a hotel. They've got a water park here, they've got a recreational facility, they've got outbuildings, you know, cabanas. I mean, that's, that's what you see at a club. You don't see this at a single-family home. And, and they're putting it in a parking lot for, for 50 cars. If you build it, they will come. My clients are across the street, and, and they've lived through three years of the construction of this.
You have about 30 seconds.
You know, there's, there's 11 different items, and, and usually you get three minutes for one item. There's 11 items here, and it's going to take a little more time to address it, but just three minutes. Everybody else has got one item on their, their request for a variance, not, not 11, not 11 significant changes. So I ask the chair, please indulge me a little bit. Perhaps I can cover some of the ground that other people will not need to duplicate. Now, this was a, a, this was a problem by design. This isn't some unfortunate situation. This individual took and decided that he wanted to put his house smack dab in the middle of that lot and raise it up 30 feet so everybody could see it from all around. Now, he wants to put these gazebos up that are going to be 34 feet, so those are going to be 64 feet up from grade. These, they're towering. The pictures you've seen are all carefully picked it, depicted to show that the house looks like it's in conformity. But, Mr. Henry, you went out there, you saw it. It looms over the whole neighborhood. If you go and look at it from the Pembroke side, you look at it from the Mystic Valley side, it looms over that whole neighborhood. And now they want to put more structures up to loom over the neighborhood. It's, it's just not consistent. And one of my big concerns is that, once they build it, they will come. There's going to be a tremendous amount of noise, and all the arbivites in the world are not going to, you know, are, you know, when you're talking about 50-car park, car park, you're talking about 100 people coming to enjoy these, these, these facilities. And when you have 100 people enjoying those, all the arbivites in the world are not going to stop the noise coming over to my client's property. He spent three years already listening to the construction of this house. You could sit in the backyard of his house, and it's interfering with his quiet enjoyment. It's going to be worse if you would allow this. And that court over there, we don't know what they're going to be using it for. They could be using it for basketball, they could be using it for, for pickleball. It's going to be loud. And it's right across the street from my client's. It's not in their backyard, it's in their front yard, and it's right across the street from my client's house. This is something by design. They had the A-team here. Orchard, DeRozier, Gethsemane, these are the A-team. These people, they built some of the most beautiful compliant properties in this community. They knew, and he knew from day one, that, that this was not approved, and this was not consistent with the zoning ordinances. And it would be a horrible mistake. Once you approve, if you approve this, everybody's going to come out of the woodwork, and they're going to, they're going to start making these types of requests, and they're going to start asking for these types of amenities, which will completely change the whole feel of our community. It will interrupt the harmony of our community. It's not right. I, I, this is a self-created problem. This wasn't a problem that was necessitated. The, the property could have easily been, been used in a manner to, to permit a pool and a tennis court, whatever he needed, but he chose not to do that, and there's no reason to give me a variance.
Thanks so much. Could I have the next person from this side?
My name is Fran Smith, and I live at 3860 Mystic Valley. And there's something I would like to add. I am the, one of the property owners that live right across from the sport court and, which is my front yard, and this is considered their front yard, one of many, obviously, because of the way the residence is situated on the property. I pretty much stayed back from the situation and let my husband Larry handle it, but he couldn't be here tonight. And as you probably know, he was on the zoning board of appeals under the Dave Payne administration, so he is very familiar with what is going on. What I'd like to add is that, from personal experience, the noise coming from the subject's property. Our patio is at the rear of the home, and during the past few summers, we've had to endure the construction noise, radios, the workers talking away. It's just been very, very annoying. There is no doubt that with a sport court, a swimming pool, lazy river in the front yard, there would be a much higher and more continuous volume of noise that will be consistent and constant throughout the summer. Now we are subjected to looking at the pool cabana, gazebos, trellises, 34 feet from ground level. You know, when the house in the property right there is already elevated, which is going to elevate this more, I mean, there were spectacular, at least 40-foot evergreens that were there that were taken down. And yes, there's a few tall ones there, but the majority are, you know, much lower, six foot, and it's going to take every bit of 20, 30 years before they, they grow and will not even, as far as the noise, it's not going to have any effect on the noise. You know, it's, it's really sad, because this is all in our front yards. Everybody that lives on Mystic Valley and on Pemberton, so I don't want it in my front yard. You know, these items do not need to be in the front yard and can easily be placed on the south side of the property, adjacent to Long Lake Road. This could all have been figured out and can still be figured out, and yes, it's the lower part of the property, but so is where the sports court is going to be. You know, that's a much lower part of the property. They're talking about having retaining walls. How, how are they going to see their kids when they're down there? You know, at the sport court? It's no different than if it was by Long Lake Road. It's just the way that they've, the lay of the land, the way they've designed, designed it. So, I mean, this isn't Disneyland, and I've already noticed the influx of traffic down our street from people that are coming to see what the hell's being built on that corner. It's ridiculous. You know, unfortunately, you know, fortunately for you, you don't live there, but unfortunately for us, and the people that do have small children in the neighborhood that are used to riding their bikes, they're really going to have to watch it, because, you know, the way the traffic has been increased, and it's only going to get worse, you know, with this. Thank you.
Thanks very much. So could we have the next person on this side? Is there anyone on this side? So you, you're free to say, I agree with what's been said before, and I'd like to add.
I'm free, and I will say that. Matter of fact, a lot of the things I said have been said. For the record, Matt Schwannitz, 3755 West Pemberton. Very end of the call section. Before my time starts, could somebody explain the blue front yard on, on the drawings? That's not a front yard. That's a side yard, and it's arguably a rear yard. And that's where I'm going with this. I don't know why that's labeled that way. Years back, the proponent assembled quite a team. No doubt, no denial. Lot of experience, they know the ordinances inside and out. I'm sure they abstracted your ordinance. I'm sure they looked at all the facts of title. I'm sure they looked at the deed restrictions. I can't imagine doing this project without doing that. And at the conclusion of that, before they owned it, they decided to buy the property. And before they proceeded with the variances that they surely knew about, they started construction. It's a little bit of a pressure play over the long term. They've been building for three years without ever getting those variances. And I will repeat something. They had to have sat down in those early meetings and said, there's a design solution here. And this plan, I can point it out, you take the residence and you literally flip it. The residence is all the way up to one of the front yards. And all the amenities, though they're up on the hill, certainly not desirable, not in the greatest spot for them to use, but that's the spot for this site. They decided not to do that. They decided to stick with this, proceed with variances over time at risk. That's a heck of a risk. But that eastern property line is arguably a rear yard. That's where all these should be. If any one of us showed up here, we would be arguing that if we wanted to do something like this. You wouldn't be putting them out in the front. Are they great spots? No. Maybe this wasn't the site. This was three lots. The subdivision was developed by Harold Turner. Harold Turner built a number of our homes, including ours, and he built the original Devon Gables. He worked for Frank Lloyd Wright for anywhere from 15 to 20 years, I don't recall. And the homes he built worked with the landscape. And if you look through our neighborhood, the homes in our neighborhood, more than not are built into the landscape, not on top of it. And lastly, I know the time's running short. That frontage on Long Lake Road, that's neither detention or storm. I didn't hear anybody say either. That can be designed to be dealt with. They want that sport court, put it out in the frontage. Let the whole community, let all Bloomfield Hills see it. For that matter, put the pool there. Let all Bloomfield Hills see it. Is it a great spot? No. This was probably a site that they shouldn't have bought, and that keys on the bottom line on this. This is a self-made hardship. You can't grant something that's self-imposed. This was self-imposed hardship. They had other choices. They made a decision, and they proceeded. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on, on this side of the floor?
Hi, my name is Pam Miller. I live at 3792 West Pemberton. I'm asking the board to deny the requested variances. If they were approved, it would completely change the entire nature and character of our neighborhood. So the township has ordinances and places to prevent the very construction that they're asking for here. There's ordinances that specifically govern the accessory structures, as you know, that govern what the, that require them to be in the rear of the yard, under certain height requirements, not occupy more than a certain percentage of the yard. That is the law in this township. Right? And I know this board has the authority to go ahead and grant variances, but there's also standards that have to be met in order for those variances to be granted. And those standards have not been met here, and they cannot be met with this proposal. The board's required by law, required by the ordinances, to consider the location and the size and the use. You're required to consider the pedestrian traffic. You're required to consider the nature, the location, the size, and the site layout, and that those uses have to be harmonious with the neighborhood. It also can endanger public safety or be objectionable to the nearby homes and dwellings because of noise, fumes, or flashes of light. It's absolutely absurd. It's laughable to say that this property and these variances aren't in harmony with any of the other houses in the neighborhood. I submitted a letter earlier today. I don't have a fancy PowerPoint, but I will show you. These are just photos of the houses in the neighborhood.
The board did receive those.
Yeah, this letter was in our package.
I know, I just wanted to make sure.
They weren't in color, so this is helpful.
Thank you. And, and if you look at the pictures of the homes in that neighborhood, right? And then you look at the picture, and this is what was referenced earlier as what was posted in front of the house by the developer, right? And this is just the pool alone. The pool alone and all the structures here with the, with the gazebo and the lazy river and the spa, that alone isn't consistent and harmonious with the houses in the neighborhood. But then you look at not only the pool features, but now, and the pool, consider, we've talked about the height, too, but I'd also like you to consider, you know, the sizes of all these items that are being put in there. The pool itself is going to be 25 by 50. And then there's a spa. And then there's a lazy river. And then there are bridges over the lazy river. There's a slide. There's a fire pit. And then there's a rock skate. Then you have the pool cabana. The pool cabana is 40 by 20 feet. And then that's going to be 14 feet high. Then you have a pergola. The pergola is 16 by 17 feet, and that's going to be 14 feet high. And that's just the pool area. Then what I consider to be one of the most egregious things is the gazebo that's going to come off the second-story terrace of the house, jut into the front yard, and it's going to be 34 feet high, like this giant tower in the middle of this front yard. Right? This giant structure. And I don't care how high those evergreens grow, they are never going to block that view. They're never going to block it. And then in the corner, you have this garden gazebo, right? That's going to be, and that's, you know, it's not hidden, that corner is easily viewable from everybody in the neighborhood. And everybody makes that entryway to go out to Pemberton if they're going to go out to Telegraph Road. It's right there at the corner. That's going to be easily viewable, no matter how much screening they put up there as well. And whatever it's going to be used for, that's also going to create, I'm sure, a ton of noise if it's, you know, if it's used, you know, for music or for entertainment. And then you have the sports court. Now, that sports court is going to be 80 by 48 feet. It's going to have 10-foot fences around it. It's going to have two basketball courts. It looks like it has a viewing area. And then, you know, I didn't even look because it's not, you know, on the variances, but then you talk about this parking lot that's going to be on there, too.
So do you think you could, you're up in about four and a half minutes. Could you wrap up in the next 30 seconds?
Sure.
Thank you.
So they're not consistent with the neighborhood. They're not consistent with any other home in the neighborhood. As mentioned earlier, these are more consistent with an apartment complex or a hotel. With these sort of entertainment features, there's probably going to be lots of entertainment, you know, hence the need for a parking lot in the, in the front yard, which is going to lead to increased traffic. I have two boys, two young boys who live in that neighborhood, in our neighborhood, who ride their bikes, and they ride their bikes right along there. Right? They've had to watch out for the construction, they've had to watch out for strangers in the neighborhood. You know, it definitely endangers, you know, them and their safety and the pedestrian traffic in the neighborhood. Lastly, I want the board to consider, even though it is a larger parcel of property, right? It's bigger than my lot. When you look at everything that is being asked and look at it in its entirety, right? Not only is it not harmonious, but, but, you know, I heard them mention earlier, all these things have been granted at some point in time by the township. Have they all been granted at one time in one location for one property? The, the property is large, but it's not that large to support all this. It's going to make it a giant eyesore. It's going to make it look like a hotel in the middle of our neighborhood, and it's just simply not harmonious. The standard hasn't been met here, and it should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else on this side?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brian Conches. I live at 3792 West Pemberton with my wife Pam and our two children. It's good to see you after a year. I support everything that was said for those who came before me. The things I'd like to add is, are that council for the builders have said themselves that these are not allowed in the front yard by ordinance. My wife just said, have these all been granted for one place? I'd ask, have they all been granted in one place in the front yard, or any of it in a front yard in our township? One thing that hasn't been addressed is the request for the gate on Long Lake Road. How close to Long Lake that would be, what kind of setback that would look like? Because I'm concerned about the traffic. If we have a parking lot of any size, as it was identified as a parking lot, if you're coming in off of Long Lake, are you going to be backed up onto the road? Right? And if that's the case, it's going to cause a hazard not just for the community in our neighborhood, but the community who uses Long Lake. This is all, as they identified, sort of a self-created issue. And I think it was well said that, had you come, had they come before you to request these prior to building the residence in the facing format? these prior to building the residence in the facing format that they have, you know, they, they could have been changed. It could have been identified. I feel bad for the builders, for the owner. It'd be great to see someone in the property, but what's being asked for is not in line with your ordinances, especially with this neighborhood. So I'd ask that you deny these ordinances, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Well done. Is there anyone else on this side that would like to speak? Right there, yeah, right there.
Hi, I'm Craig Metros. I live at 3841 Mystic Valley. I'm about three doors down north of the site, further down on Mystic Valley. So I agree with everything that's been said before me. You've heard a lot about harmony and even aesthetics and how it fits in the neighborhood. And I guess you can really argue, though I agree with all of that, it's still, you could argue that all of that's subjective. I think what isn't subjective is my concern in reinforcing the, the noise issue and, and the light pollution. So we're three doors down on Mystic Valley Drive, and we hear every sporting event from Bloomfield High School. We hear, we hear the, the games going, we hear the cheers, we hear the loudspeaker, and we're three doors down from the site on the other side of Long Lake. So we're, we're really concerned with all this activity. A parking lot that's the size of Starbucks, we're concerned that there's going to be a lot of activity and a lot of noise and a lot of light pollution. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side?
Hi, I'm Nancy McLaughlin. I live at 3791 West Pemberton. I did write a letter about a year ago, expressing some of my concerns. And I guess I just would like to, and I live a distance from the home, but when we bought our property, we probably have some of the biggest trees in the neighborhood. I mean, there's other houses with really big trees too, but we have trees around our entire neighborhood. One of the reasons we bought it is we didn't really want to have to see all of our neighbors all the time. We wanted to have that sense of, I mean, want to see our neighbors, but, you know, we wanted to have that sense of privacy. And it was, you know, the idea of living right at Long Lake and Telegraph. But yeah, you still felt like you're almost living in the country because we have a nice-sized piece of property. We have a ton of trees. They're very tall. When we sit on our back patio before this house started being built, I think we could see one other house, and it was quite a distance away. And if we put up another tree, we probably wouldn't need to see that house either if we didn't want to. But I can see this house from our backyard, and it's, it's really kind of frustrating to be able to be in our location and the distance that we are away from this house, and we can still see, you know, the elevation that it's currently at. And with this gazebo that's going to be placed in addition to the house already, I believe that it's even going to be higher than what it already is or just more expansive than it already is. So that's obviously concerning to us. The other big concern is really the, the traffic and, and the noise. And like some of the other neighbors said, I mean, we can hear the games, you know, at the high school, which is kind of fun to be able to hear them, but, you know, we don't want to hear parties going all hours of the day and night. You know, I think we're being misled. A year ago, when we listened to what the builder had to say, you know, he was saying, oh, this was just for the family, you know? It was only going to be the, you know, the parents and a couple of kids or whatever. I mean, all you have to do is look at what they're building and look at all these variances. I mean, it's very clear that, you know, you don't need that kind of amenities for just a couple of people. So the, I think we're being misled in terms of what the intent is for this property. I think it's going to be an entertainment piece of property. And, you know, again, like everyone else said, that's not harmonious with why we all came to live in this neighborhood. We wanted a quiet, quiet neighborhood where we could enjoy the peace and tranquility of the, of the area that we're in. And, and so this is just very concerning to us. And I, you know, I guess the other thing that's disturbing is the attorney said, well, all these different variances have been approved in the past. Well, like one of the other neighbors said, like, how many, how many people come with six different categories of variances and how many variances in each of those categories? I mean, it's a bit ridiculous for someone to be able to come, come and present all those different things and to think that the neighbors aren't going to come forward. You know, we're here a year later, still arguing about the same variances that they presented a year ago. And I thought after the meeting a year ago, they were supposed to come and talk to the neighbors. I haven't heard anything from the builders. So I don't think the neighbors are being considered in this, in this process. So that's all I have to say.
Thanks very much.
Very disturbing.
Anyone else on this side? All right, so let's start with this side, the, who's ever closest to the front and would like to speak. Add anything that hasn't been said.
Hi, my name's Eric Bolinger. I live at 3960 Mystic Valley Drive. I live directly across from the main entry gate. My house was built by Harold Turner. It's sunken into the landscape. I have a berman for my house, and all I can see now is this house. They're putting in a new retaining wall, just as we speak. It's bright white. I can see it from my living room, my kitchen. Then they want to put a huge gate in front of my driveway. They could have put that driveway anywhere they wanted, but they picked in front of my house. They could have staggered it. They chose to put it in my face. And I'm very happy you're not putting a guard check there anymore. Thank you very much.
So you have to address your comments, Doug.
Yeah, so that, that's, that's, I really appreciate that. You know, guy with a gun, 24 hours. I'm glad they took that away, but I don't know why they're so, want security so bad. That makes me a little nervous about my new neighbor. But anyways, yeah, that, the whole, I didn't know those pillars are going to be lit in front of me. So it's going to be, besides all the noise and everything else that I agree with completely, it's going to be awful. I've been living in Bloomfield Hills since I was seven years old. I've lived in the house that I'm currently at since I was six, or 16 years now with my family. I choose to grew, to raise my family here because it's such a beautiful neighborhood. If you do this, it's changed Bloomfield forever, and you can't go back. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on this side?
Hi there. My name's Teresa Bolinger. I'm at 3960 Mystic Valley Drive. I'm afraid I'm a little late to this party with all of, all of the meetings that have taken place so far. So I have a few more comments. I wasn't allowed to give them at the prior meetings. I want to firstly say thank you, ZBA, for all you do. We truly have a beautiful and unified community that you have always protected. Thank you for guarding our neighborhoods, our community and residents. I implore you to set and maintain precedence tonight. You decide what is allowed and not allowed in my neighborhood. Friends, Bloomfield Township has worked diligently in unifying our diverse communities. Please consider the mission statement of our community, "One Bloomfield." We pride ourselves in being a community of inclusion, united, friendly, open, not segregated with an erected border wall. We have enough division in our world. Why ignite more? I ask you why. As an example of the non-cooperation of these illustrious individuals, we, the neighbors, did not even receive notice of this meeting tonight. Find out who it was dispersed to. The information was hidden and dispersed under the cloak of darkness. Who in this courtroom in our neighborhoods did not receive notice of this meeting? Show of hands.
So, so you need to direct your comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then those behind me that showed their hands are those that did not receive.
Not a courtroom, so you just direct your comments.
They did not receive notice. I, being the closest neighbor to this individual's house, did not receive a notice. As a matter of fact, I would like to outline that the linear footage of three lots far supersedes two football fields. And yet, where did these wonderful designers put, I'm not, I'm sorry. Where did they place their driveway? The, the driveway directly across from mine so that every construction vehicle, every vehicle in and out, they couldn't pick anywhere else out of hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of feet? This is indicative of why they're doing things the way they are. They don't care. I'll move on quickly. Furthermore, at the last meeting, these folks said they would work with the neighbors, try to resolve issues, set up some meetings, open up the old communication gates. Has anyone here received any notices of any such meetings or discussions?
Nope.
All right. I also concur with my, my, my neighbors' former comments, but I'd also like to start by stating that this Neverland complex is like dropping a watermelon in a patch of strawberries. It's careless and reckless. It is the result of unmitigated greed from builders, contractors, landscape architects, and the like. The construction is not being done by a novice either. No, it's under the approval of a man who has taken over, taken part in probably 100 real estate transactions. He has well over 50 tobacco and marijuana paraphernalia shops. There were no dealings. There was no zoning involved with paraphernalia shops. We must be kidding ourselves.
So your comments need to be directed at the variances that are being requested?
Yes, yes. I'm just outlining precedence that this gentleman knows how to deal with zoning ordinances and yet has not. I'll move on, I'm almost done. Most alarming is the desire to erect penitentiary-style fencing and ironclad gates around this complex. They will become fear mongers in my neighborhood and your neighborhoods. They are going to instill fear. My daughter, who goes to the high school, is going to want to ask me why there's a penitentiary-style fence in our neighborhood, protecting them from all of us horrible folks yielding pitchforks and axes. And what's really bothersome to my husband is I, and I, is that they, they even wanted to put a prison guard house. You know, the thought of having a leering armed guard looking at my daughter and her friends as they returned from high school makes me want to cry.
But that's been moved from the request, so that's not relevant.
All right, and this is the last comment. There's a wise person, because I'm sick of, of all of this back and forth too, as you can tell by my terse demeanor. But there was a wise person that once said, even if you coat a crap with 24-karat gold, it's still a shiny turd.
Is there anyone else on this side that would like to add something new?
Hi, my name's Dave Cooper. I'm at 3790 Pembroke, apparently. And, and I have to say, as, as, as much as, as I, as I do appreciate all your volunteer efforts and am happy to see you again, I'm personally, my sensibilities are offended that I'm compelled to come out here again, a year later, to hear, to hear substantially the same appeals requests that we heard a year ago. You know, I'm a busy person. I have things to do also. I'm sure all of you are too, and I appreciate your volunteering here. As you, as you may know, our neighborhood is, is very historic in nature. There's a whole dissertation about our neighborhood and Harold Turner and Laura Turner, the proprietor of the Devon Gables Restaurant that was there at the Bloomfield Historical Society. And that, and, and Mrs., when Mr. and Mrs. Turner laid out the neighborhood, they specifically designed it to be park-like with rolling lawns, not chopped up with fences or walls or things like that. It was designed with low ranch-style houses that fit into the landscape. So this is the ambiance of the neighborhood that you can still feel if you go in there, knock on wood. There's still that ambience there a little bit. This would put the nail in the coffin. What, you know, the, the biggest thing for me, I'm not living right across from the property, but I'm going past it all the time. And we don't have any houses, any properties, as far as I know, in the township, correct me if I'm wrong, that have a fence or wall along a drive. We don't have walled-off compounds or treed-off compounds, maybe along major roads, but not along drives. And we're talking about walling off Mystic Valley Drive. Now, the original Tom Long Ranch that was on top of the hill, he had big, impressive trees, but you could still see the rolling hills up to the ranch up there. And what's going on now is the whole thing is being turned into essentially a wall of trees, and now there's going to be a fence and more trees and so on. So, so we, we allow walled-in compounds? I mean, if we allow this to happen, now we've opened the floodgates for walled-in compounds in the township. If that's what you want to do tonight, that's the power that you have right now. I urge against it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this item? Then I'm going to close the public comment and ask the applicant to respond.
If I could go first, there are a couple of, some of the consultants would like to speak too. Thank you. So first of all, it, I, I understand what the neighbors are saying, and it sounds like, number one, they're complaining about the, the construction traffic, which is, whatever's going to go there is, is going to have construction. It's something that we all have to deal with in life, and so that'll eventually end at some point, but that's not what we're here for tonight, for construction traffic. Secondly, is, in the last gen I'm going to spoke about, upset about that you can't see up the hill. Some people don't want to see the house. Some people do want to see the house. They're, they're apparently not happy with, some people are not happy with the greening, with the, with the, with, which what my client was supposedly trying to assist the neighbors in providing a screen pursuant to township ordinance, which says these matters are supposed to be screened, so they...
Screaming is a desperate attempt.
Hey, the, the public comment is closed. Please do not make any more comments from the public. I've kind of let that go. Please stop, or I'll have to ask you to leave.
So...
Proceed, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you. So we're not here about the house, and the screening is required by township ordinance and is part of the enhancement to make sure it was screened because the people were complaining about what was happening on the property. That's why there's enhanced screening there, which is what your ordinance requires. And then, as to the point about they could have built a house somewhere else, well, respectfully, as the last gentleman said, the ranch house was up there before, was on the hill at, at the highest level of property. And again, the practical difficulty is front yards all the time and the topographical change from east to west of 30-some feet. So the house faced east. It faced toward Telegraph Road. Our house faces toward Telegraph Road. What people are saying about it could have been designed differently, it's a problematic elevation issue with the front yards. And sure, I don't know if there are any other front yard fences or, or pools in township. Are there any other properties in the township that have three streets surrounding it? This is a really unique situation, which is why the zoning board is here to provide relief from the ordinance when relief is other, another, wouldn't occur. So otherwise, they would have to, somebody would have to level that 30-foot-high hall, a hill that's been there forever and, and lay and balance the whole thing, which is ridiculous. It's not what the property is. The property is a house on top of the hill facing east, and whatever amenities, the only place they can go is, I get it, in the front yard. But that's because of these three yards. Nothing self-created. That's the way it is. And again, there are other, there are other sports courts. There in the neighborhood, there are sports courts. Down the street, there are sports courts. They're common. There's probably one of the most common variance requests you get here at the ZBA. You know that way better than I do. Pool, there are a lot of pools in the area. There's a cabana. Pools, a lot of times have cabanas. None of this is untoward or is something that is not out of line for the size of the property. So I understand that people don't want change. I get that. The house was approved by the township, and even the gazebo, the attached gazebo, is going, if you can see the top of the house, maybe you can see the top gazebo, but the top of the gazebo will mirror the house and will be shorter than the gazebo. So I think there are some other folks, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, would like to address some of the comments made specifically. Thank you.
That's fine.
How do you do, ladies and gentlemen, Lou DeRosier, 37... Ladies and gentlemen, Lou DeRosier, 36330, architect for the project, 36330 Woodward Avenue at Bloomfield Hills. But it's always exciting to be here, I'll say that. I do want to set the record straight on one thing that the gentleman over there said. We did not, nor do we ever, put a sign up until we have a building permit and the ground is excavated.
So again, just direct your comments to us.
Oh, I'm sorry. So he was wrong about that. So the other thing I want to say.
Make them to us.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's important, it's, I think, partially been overlooked, that, two things I just want to say. For everybody who's been here and seen that, the existing house that was up there, I met Mr. Mike Simona there the first day, I remember, it was years ago, and there we were with this big sprawling ranch home, it's good size, and it was aiming the exact direction that this house was. The front door was in almost the same place, the rear looked out over all the property. So that was already established that there was a house there, just like that, you went up the same drive, Devon Gables there, and that's the way they went up, and their front door was right where that front door was. So the other thing I want to say is the, no one really realizes that if you look, we're going to point to it with the red dot here, that this whole shape we're drawing in here is the building envelope. Anything can be built in that envelope, okay? That's a house, a structure, a pool, all of these things. We're here because smartly, your ordinance asks for people to come in when they're doing these things to make sure they get covered, but you're allowed to put a structure within that envelope. And I think it's important that everybody understands that that can be done. Oh, one last thing about the infamous gazebo, becoming infamous. Our interpretation, we designed this, our interpretation of your ordinance, and we asked all the people in your department here, that any structure that was attached to the main building, in this case, we have a large deck showing how it's attached, was able to use the house building heights requirements. It was part of the house. When we submitted for a permit, they were not sure about that, so there's what we call like, there's a gray area in your ordinance here, this has been discussed, that doesn't make it clear what attachment means. But that's why we designed it that way, okay? And so to us, it was just part of the existing house. So in an effort to appease and be more comfortable with everyone, we did lower it four feet, which is, yeah. And the other thing is, all of you that have driven around, these trees that were there were 65-footers, and they're adding 20-footers, and you really can't see it all. So that's my personal opinion, but remember the building envelope. Thank you.
Does that conclude the response, Mr. Ryan? Is there anyone else?
Yeah, just one or two more, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
How you doing, folks? Tom Shafu with Orchard Development, 7031 Orchard Lake Road. I want to thank everybody for your time. I know this has been a long item on the agenda and a lot to discuss. As my colleagues Lou mentioned, in our years of doing this, this is probably the property that had the most amount of practical difficulties due to the topography and, more importantly, the roads. We have three roads that face this and making it very, very challenging. But one thing I want to emphasize is, this property could have been chopped into three, and it could have had an impact three times full for common requests for folks in the community. Between pools, sports courts, other amenities, had this been divided into three, then they would be ideally three requests for a lot of these items. By consolidating this into one, and you can see the significant amount of green space that still exists, impact becomes only for one household and not three. That's one thing I wanted to touch upon. This property is unique because it's always served as its own access. It's not deep into the neighborhood. It's the first lot. It's attached to a commercial site, and it's surrounded by three roads. There's no direct impact that abuts a neighbor, other than having a street that's a buffer, lots of mature trees, additional mature trees, and there was an aerial that Adam showed you that's over 300 feet of distance from that property line into the next door up front, so you can see that right there. So there's a significant amount of distances. We are taking into consideration screening, double screening as a matter of fact. That way, every single item on the agenda that's being requested is not visible. That's the intent of your ordinance. We intend to follow through with that for all parties, for our client, for the privacy of the neighborhood, and that is going to happen, which is going to make it virtually impossible, other than seeing the top portion of the house that is visible. There's no ordinance to stopping it. So I just wanted to emphasize these important points and for you guys to consider a major practical difficulty with these front yards that are attached to this property.
My name is Randy Marciel, 438 Main Street, downtown Rochester. I just wanted to add a little bit of color commentary. My clients are here tonight, the Simonas, they're hearing all of this, they're going to be neighbors to all of these people. It seems to me that there's been a lot of emotional and defamatory things, actually, against their character, which is not a good thing, but nonetheless, it has happened. I work on, as the attorney for the Smith said, they hired the A-team. It's Lou DeRosier, Gosemane Landscape, and Orchard Construction. And as such, I try to interpret my clients' wishes and desires for their dream homes. And every dream home, and I've worked on a lot of them in Bloomfield, we do flyover, I can point to them, asking for a cabana or a pool is not extraordinary. This, I thought, and maybe I'm wrong, we'd have to go back and look at the notes from the last meeting, and the reason that we're here a year later, by the way, I'd like to put that in the record, is because someone had done a Freedom of Information Act and challenged the Devon Gables entry point, that it hadn't been recorded in the deed. As such, lawyers worked with the township and the township's lawyers to finally get that vacated and put aside. So that's really why we're here a year later. The variances that we were asking for were always going to stay. Now, your law or the ordinance is demand that we put all of these things down. It may seem like it's a lot of numbers, but really, anything over nine inches, 18 inches, needs your approval. So that's when the list gets long. But on a home like this that has these amenities, this enjoyment, and has these aesthetics, from my viewpoint, at least as the designer, it goes along with the beauty of the home. This is not unusual for this to be going on in Bloomfield Hills. I would point out to you, doesn't set precedent, I understand that, the Ishbia residents. I have a resident that had a landscape right across the street, by the way, that has cabana, has a huge pool. He has a pool that's almost the size of a high school pool. We went through and we got approvals. So that in and of itself is not unusual. And I feel like, not just feel, but we'd have to look at the record from last year when we were before the board, that everyone was somewhat in agreement to the fact that this was the backyard, even though it went on these three streets. You'd have to look into the record for that. So I just wanted to point out, you know, we try to.
About 30 seconds, could you wrap up?
Yeah, I can, actually. Actually, I'm really long-winded, but I can do it in 30 seconds.
Thank you.
So we heard a lot of things, you know, that are personal opinions, but the aesthetics, this goes on. And did I mention the Ishbia property?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, they tore down seven homes down the street right across from it, and all of that stuff, once again, I know it's not present, but when you ask or when it's delineated what happens in Bloomfield Hills, that has all these amenities and they face that road. So that's it. I'm done.
Thank you so much.
One last thing. Adam Marciel from Gosemane Landscaping, 438 Main Street, Rochester, Michigan. I just want to address the issue of both speaking with the neighbors, screening, screening that we've started to put in. We did host a meeting with the neighbors, it was about, I think it was on January 25th of 2023. We hosted at the Centerpoint Marriott. There is no association, to my knowledge, as of this day, you know, and I had to gather names to reach out to everybody and invite them to that meeting strictly by looking at the public notice and gathering all those addresses, trying to mail things to, invite people to the hotel there to meet. Unfortunately, the people that did attend, it was a snowy night, of course, but, you know, we were able to show them the project, talk, hear many concerns, and some of those concerns, you know, we do consider valid and we try to take into account by respecting a rear yard, excuse me, a front yard setback, even though these items are in the front yard, so we're actually, they're five feet further in, adding additional screening. And then even now, we've, you know, we've started to, it's premature because the project is moving forward, but to begin to install some large screening, not six-foot evergreens, we've begun to install 18-to-20-foot spruce along the road, all the other things, any sort of construction at any point, like the house now, or it's going to look stark because it's not finished. But, I mean, it is our intention, I guess legally, too, and showing that, showing the township and our client making the investment, to screen off all these items and all these areas. And again, this is a man with a family, this is, and we started with this, it's intended for the occasional day use. This is not a party pad. Anything else is just pure speculation. And.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up. We've heard some of that before, so you gave us some good points.
Gotcha.
Just give a, any quick closing wrap-up?
I think that'll wrap it up.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, I thank you. Unfortunately, I'd just say this is why the zoning board exists, to give relief from the ordinance, and thank you for your time.
So why don't you stand up? Let's see, is there any other questions of Mr. Ryan or his team? I forget which letter they wanted to call himself. Anyone else? Any questions?
I have. I think we all probably have questions.
Okay.
Oh, well, because one of my main things was about talking to the neighbors, and I know that we were here a year ago, there was, you know, a lot of concerns from the residents. And then I was glad that you had mentioned that you had an attempt, but were there other attempts? And then you had mentioned you had to gather all of the addresses, contact information. Were you able to gather all of that and then send them invites?
So when we hosted the meeting, we asked people to sign in, and they refused to do so because they thought maybe it was some sort of retaliation, which was.
Yep.
And we did, we were not able to then gather everybody, I mean, gather everybody together, post that without any sort of association or group to bring everybody together, to talk to everybody. There were certain individuals that we talked to at different times throughout the process, but that was it. I mean, we did submit this morning five letters of recommendation for the project from the neighborhood, but that was it.
Okay. Because I know that those meetings go a long way when we have these types of projects, you know, and situations like this. The other thing that I wanted to ask about was, there were a lot of comments about the fencing and all of that. Do we have any pictures of what the fencing looks like?
Oh, sure.
I'd like to look at that.
Sure. And again, remember, because I think of the neighbors' objections to the fences, that there's going to be, they're eight-foot inboard, and they're going to be evergreen screening in front of the fence on the street side, so the fences will not be visible.
So, okay, so we did see that. So that's.
This is the four-foot aluminum fence that runs along Pemberton and Mystic Valley, which that's eight-foot inside the property line and completely screened. You kind of see in this cross-section here, this is the fence behind the trees, sloped, and then there's additional screening all the way up.
Okay. So I remember seeing this. I wasn't sure if that was the total fencing because I had heard some comments about it looking like a prison and things like that, so I wanted to make sure.
So we were requesting on the Long Lake frontage and going into Mystic Valley, a wall that would match the house at five-foot, a landscape masonry wall that would connect to the gates in the front. And again, eight-foot inside the property line and completely screened with evergreens.
Now, was this, because I heard a comment from one of the residents that it was a white fence, there was some, is this the one that they may be referring to?
I think they're referring to, there's some retaining that's going in within the ordinance along the driveway, which all will be screened once it's finished. So again, it's a stone that's going in right now, a stacked stone.
Okay. And then I think that's, what I, I know there was also a comment that, you know, this was not a, I think the term, I'm going to quote somewhere, it said "party pad." I don't know which one of you said that, but I wrote it down. It's not a party pad, but this is just really for the entertainment for the family. And I do understand that in Bloomfield Township, we do have these kind of amenities. But I also heard you reference a parking lot, so are you?
I'll show the slide if you would. While they're showing the slide, if I may, so obviously, there's no fencing in yet. I mean, there's temporary fencing, but there's no permanent fence in until we get approval. So that's why it's not out there, and there's been nothing done relative to a permanent fence or a wall.
Well, I was talking about, well, because there was a lot of comments about, you know, concern about traffic, noise, and then you had mentioned that, and I can't recall which one had mentioned that this is not necessarily a party pad, this is just for entertainment for the family, and you do have a right to have guests and host, you know, people at your residence. But then I heard quite a few of you, when you were doing your presentation initially, had referred to having a parking lot, so I was just wondering, you know.
Well, maybe that was an incorrect term. You can see, because of the topography, the garage is just to the left of that red rectangle, and that's where the hill is and where the retaining walls are, so it'll hold all that together, that's why there's retaining walls, and that'll be a parking area and a turnaround area to go through the garage, or porte-a-cachere, for my French person, Mr. DeRosier, porte-a-cachere, so that they can go through and around and get back out, in and out, through the driveway system.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead. Please.
Could you please put the aerial view back up?
After you improve your.
How's that?
There you go.
So I'd like to see the layout aerial view, please, the one that has the items on it. You know, I've looked at this many times. I've also walked the property, granted, it was about a year ago. This house clearly was built in its original position. I don't understand why there is a pool or a sport court in the primary front yard. I do understand secondary front yardages quite well. It seems as though there's many options to add a wonderful pool similar to this, as well as a sport court in other areas of the yard. You have a lot of secondary frontages that would accommodate this quite well. I'm not going to tell you where, but considering you have a lot of options there, I don't understand how you chose the front yard.
I'm sorry, I don't, what do you mean by secondary frontages?
So when you have a home that is positioned on a parcel, the front door is the front yard.
Correct.
We could draw a horizontal line or just a straight line across approximately, and that would be the primary front yard. When you have a secondary front yard, that's because you have roads that go around it. For another example, it could be a home that's on a corner lot. The front yard's the front yard, the side that is on the other or facing the other street is the secondary front yard. In this position here, in this parcel, you have two secondary front yards as well as one primary front yard. I'm just making that as a statement. These are wonderful features. It is a beautiful home. These features should be, in my opinion, not in the primary front yard.
Do you believe that the term "secondary front yard" is in the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you?
Well, which did you say is a secondary front yard? Long Lake Road?
I just explained it, and I'm not going to go into exactly the details of it, but I think the point is made.
Yep. But a front yard's a front yard, correct?
There's a primary front yard with this lot, and there are many secondary front yards. That's all, right now.
I have a couple of questions and a comment. Was there, maybe Patty can answer this, was there a variance in the height of the home, the home that's built there? Was there a variance, did that meet height restrictions? Went from a ranch to a tall structure?
No, that conforms.
No, it conforms. There's no weariness on the house. And do we know 100% that that front yard in blue is not actually a rear yard, except in the term 100%?
What are you pointing to? That might be helpful.
Right there, right there. The front yard that's written in blue.
That actually is adjacent to the.
That actually is adjacent to the commercial property, so if it's adjacent to commercial property, that's not a frontage.
So the, are you asking, Scott, the blue-
If it's a rear yard, issue a rear yard.
It seems like it ought to be.
Yeah, and that, if that's what you're talking about, because there's a portion that's, that's adjacent to the court, there's a portion that's adjacent to commercial property, that portion adjacent to commercial property would be a rear lot, a rear-
So what we're noticing is, if you're interpreting, I want to just confirm, you're saying that that's potentially mislabeled?
To me, it looks like it's mislabeled.
Okay, just-
That's their PowerPoint, please understand, that's, that's not what we-
I understand.
Yeah. We're just trying to clarify.
Then the other, other comment from experience, usually when there's a accessory, accessory structure that is not connected to the house, it has its own restrictions on height. If it's connected by a roof line, then it can meet the, the height restrictions of the home. This one, I have a problem with, it's not connected with a roof line, and it feels like a tower to me. It's, it's, if it was a roof line that connected to the house, I, it would be conforming as far as how that goes.
That's correct, that's how we interpreted, that's why they're here tonight.
Yep. That's all.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, go ahead, ask it, please.
Yeah. And at the, at the risk of being, at the risk of being master of the obvious, but I just, I would just want to make sure that I'm clear on this. So we've got the residents right here, is this the front door right here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then, in my world, then this would be my front yard. Because my front yard is right outside the entrance to my home. So I've always called it a front yard, all my neighbors call the yards that are in front of their front entrance their front yards. So I don't know how that's mislabeled, because it sits right in front of the entrance, you pull right up here, you go in the front door, I'm being told that's the front door, folks, that's a front yard, I'm sorry. All day long, in the United States of America, that's considered a front yard. And so now you've got this other problem, though, and that's what my colleague was talking about, these secondary fronts, because you have frontage on all these other roads, and that's what's creating the problem that so many other people are having with tonight, is because they've got these issues that they're seeing on the secondary frontage. And we're trying to figure out what, you know, what's the most effective way to deal with that, so I just want to make sure I was clear on that.
Just to make clear, I'm not considering the yard that's next to the parking lot front.
Right.
That's rear.
Yeah, I mean, you really can't even see that from the front yard anyway.
It's a rear yard.
It's kind of off to the side, or yeah, off to the side, yep.
That is the rear lot line.
Excuse me, Mr. Ford, or Madam? Denham, Denham Court was designed to go up the hill, and there were gonna be three homes on it, and Denham Court was the street that everybody fronted on, just like Mr. Ford.
What's Denham Court?
Devon.
Devon, Devon Gables.
I misheard you.
Devon Gables.
Yes, okay.
Mr. Chair.
So Patty, just because it's been now portrayed two, two different ways, the, what I heard was the original home, you know, faced towards the Chase parking lot, this house faces towards Chase parking lot. So as far as the township ordinance, that's the front yard.
That's not correct.
Okay.
You have, you have Devon Gables Court, you have Long Lake, Mystic Valley, and Pembroke. Those are all frontages. Pemberton, pardon me, Pemberton, Pemberton, those are all-
Frontages.
Frontages.
Okay.
So that the remaining area that we spoke of, that's adjacent to the commercial property, is the rear yard, is the reorientation. This property doesn't have any, technically, any side yards because of the configuration.
Because of the way it borders everything else.
Correct. How the house is oriented is, is a decision by-
The owner.
The owner. There is nothing that requires in our zoning ordinance that your front door is your front yard.
Right, and we've had several examples of that with different houses.
Correct, absolutely, absolutely.
Well, and candidly, I mean, that's what's creating, that's why they're here in the first place, because they have all of these frontages, right? I mean, isn't that what's caused this problem?
Right.
So Patty, the rear yard is along the commercial property?
Correct.
Okay.
A portion of, because it's, 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 you know, an irregular shape by, lack of-
But despite what you call it, the way it's situated in the neighborhood is everything that, you know, typically goes into a, you know, it's much more visible, it's much more impactful, so that's the, that's the issue.
It is impactful, and look, so I was on the board a year ago when this originally came up, I went to the property then, I pass by all the time, I went to it now recently. What I see is that because it's on a hill, I'm like, you're, you're gonna see it, I, I think people can hear me.
I don't know.
I mean, it's your choice, you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so what's creating the need for the variance is the fact that it's on the hill, and that's not self-created from what I can see. Now, as far as, you know, the number of the structures and all of that, you know, I'll, I'll keep that aside, we can have that as a board discussion, but because of the nature of the property, the topography, and then when you want to talk about the backyard, when you want to talk about the Mystic Valley Drive, it's a, you know, it's like a, I don't know how big of a drop it is, like you can't, you can't put anything back there. And then, you know, some of the things that I've heard were sort of contradictory, because on the one hand, you know, you've got the A Team and they know what they're doing, so then I think, well, hey, this is the A Team and they know what they're doing, then maybe this was the best use of the space and the way to, to lay it out. And then as far as, yeah, I mean, I guess that's really what I'll say. So for me, originally, at first glance, when I saw this last year, I thought, wow, this is, you know, a lot, even when I drove by, I thought, wow, you know, this house on the hill, but to the, the point that has been made, you're allowed to see houses, you know, we don't have an ordinance that a house cannot, that has to be, you know, screened. And I appreciate that they're saying that they're gonna screen all of the accessory structures from, kind of from what I noticed, because of its elevation, you know, I don't know how tall those trees are really gonna have to be to fully, to fully, fully screen everything, but, you know, I'll just leave it at that for now.
So Ryan, I mean, technically, their front, their front door is in their backyard.
Yes.
When I say front, I'm viewing it front from the street, but is that correct, Patty?
We define where the frontage is related to the street.
Okay.
So where someone's front door is their personal preference in design.
All right, that's, I mean, I, I understand that, I wanted to make sure that I wasn't interpreting it incorrectly at all.
But we grant, you know, variances when there are multiple frontages for, for people like this, and then we have to take into account the impact on the neighborhood and everything else, and how close they are to the street and everything else. So that's the, this is sort of, this is the most extreme case I've seen-
Yeah.
-all the time I've been on the zoning board.
I agree, and I'm with you.
Given the number of things, the feedback we've gotten, the proximity and sort of the mix of uses that the homeowner would like to have.
Well, and the point too, that it was originally three lots, so, you know, also the point about you could have three houses, then you could have three pools, you could have three gazebos and three everything else. And I understand, you know, I'm a huge Frank Lloyd Wright fan, and I know all about the designing into the, into the landscaping, and I'm a huge fan of that. Unfortunately, not everybody is, and people that bought this property, they were within their right to knock down what they did, and they were well within their right to build the house that they've built. So, I mean, it's tough, because I hear what the residents are saying, and, and I understand their concern about the changing nature, or what they feel is a changing nature of their neighborhood. On the other hand, we, you know, people have property rights, obviously they're here for these variances, but I do see that this is a unique property in that it's extremely elevated and is on essentially four roads. So speaking of that elevation, because, I, I mean, I've driven by the property as well, and, and it is up on a hill. And, but I've heard a lot of comments, and I also think, did you, you, you did elevate the, 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 the property, correct, to put the home, I mean, there was a hill there, but did you raise it even further?
I can answer that, no, I'm sorry, go ahead. And I've, I've heard you say that, just too, everybody needs to understand if you've visited, this house is built into the hill, much like Frank Lloyd Wright, only he didn't do it through the law. He didn't do it through the law.
Wait, 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 let's let him speak, please. Yeah, let's be respectful, please.
It's built into the house, you visited, you saw, the whole lower levels all buried in the earth, okay? And the upper level, there's a, there's a main level and an upper level, and that's it.
I understand from the construction manager that topography was not changed for the house.
Okay. I just want to make sure that was clear, because I've heard mixed comments about that, I just want everyone here to know that piece, okay.
The house, I mean, the house is a beautiful home, and it's built correctly, and it means clearly, I have no problem with the home. What we're at, discussing here is all these, you know, permission requests and dimensional variances, which seem to be for all the structures around it.
Right. And I guess, like, really the point that I was getting at is, you know, typically, when you have your enjoyment of your home, in Bloomfield, people have pools, they have, and especially now, I mean, since COVID, since being on this board, the number of these types of requests that we're getting are only increasing. So then it becomes, you know, is it reasonable for these people to want a pool and to want, you know, these things? And I guess really that's what we have to decide, so I feel like it's reasonable, it's the location of them.
All right, can I ask a question? Quick question.
Sure.
Devon Gables Court, did it originally connect Long Lake to Pemberton? Is that what happened, or have you, have you cut off Devon Gables Court?
That end up at the hill and only served, it's, yeah, it's called the Saks River in those three homes.
So-
Last six, seven, and eight, I think, or five, six.
So just in the question of front or back, and this might be for you, Patty, you talk about the street, is it the address street, or is it Mystic Valley? Because their address is Devon Gables Court.
They are electing to have Devon Gables Court as their address.
So-
But that doesn't necessarily mean that it could have been on any of the other, it could have been Long Lake, Mystic Valley.
Okay, so that doesn't impact the front or, or rear designation?
No, that doesn't necessarily define.
Okay.
All right, I think we need to draw this to a close. We have, we have six categories here, so I'm gonna review them. We have the, sort of the perimeter walls, fence and gate, it's one, two, and eight. The pool, which includes three, seven, and 12, the gazebo, site amenities, six and 10, retaining wall 11, sports court four, and gazebo nine. So I think, I mean, do you, we, we could go with, I think, do you want to take those in the groupings? Because they sort of fit together. So we could go perimeter walls, retaining walls, then gazebo, sports court, pool? I mean, does anybody, because I'm guessing, are there people that are uncomfortable with the sports court, where it's located? I mean, I, I think I am. So do you want to try-
I mean, my only concern with that is, you know, taking their word for it as far, and I, and I said retention, not detention, and I believe that that was what he had originally said, because the topography leads water down that, you know, stretch of the lot. I mean, you know, Mr. Chair, for me on this, you know, for me, the flooding is always-
Big deal, yep.
Is, is a big, big problem. So anything that's gonna exacerbate flooding, I am, am opposed to. And if that's the case in this lot, then, you know, again, we're taking their word for it, but.
All right, well then, let's, let's try this, then, how about, let's do the grouping number one, perimeter walls, fence and gate, which is one, two, and eight. Can someone make a motion on those three?
Is five first? One, two, five, and eight?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, he added that, and I didn't have that in my notes. So this is one, two, five, and eight.
Yes, sir.
Non-illuminated.
Which I think is a good grouping.
That's all just a dimensional variance?
Or does it- So we have a request as well as a dimensional variance.
Yeah, this is gonna be a little tricky, because they're gonna be probably a blend of permissions and-
Oh, okay, well then, why don't we, why don't we take that grouping first, one by one? So why don't we do one, item number one, the masonry walls and the non-illuminated piers? So the first, first item, let's do that.
Do these numbers correlate with number one permission request with number one masonry wall?
Yes. Oh, yeah, I think they do. Yes.
Number one has the permission as well as dimensional variance.
Yep, so why don't we do it that way?
We only get the, the variance on the walls of one foot, the, the perimeter fencing is just permission, because they're all four feet. But they're in the front yard.
So you're talking about on our sheet.
So they're all gonna be permission and dimensional.
Yeah, they're done, yeah.
So all of these fences and everything that's being proposed will be screened, is that right?
Yes.
Fully.
Correct, yeah. Eight-foot in and, on the eight-foot line and, from between the, between the, the fence or the wall and the road will be screened, evergreen screening. Maybe we want to show the diagram. We'll show you again what's been proposed, just so you can see it.
So, so for the walls and piers and Long Lake and Mystic Road frontage, you've got a permission request, and then you've got dimensional variances.
Correct. Of one foot.
And that is just because it's in the, it's a secondary frontage, right? That's what makes it a dimensional variance.
Except the masonry wall is higher, it's five feet.
So why does that need to be five feet, the masonry wall?
Well, because Long, Long Lake is the, is a more, is a main thoroughfare, and just for security reasons, it's only gonna bleed a little bit in, on Mystic Valley into where the, the entryway is, and then it's gonna go to four feet, the fence will go to four feet in the neighborhood. It's just security, basically. There are other large, you know, fences of, or walls of five feet along Long Lake Road in the area, because that's heavily, heavily traveled road. So the, all the evergreens you see in this proper, on this slide, the fences are inboard of that. That shows you how much screening is gonna be there.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion for the walls and piers, the Long Lake Road and Mystic Valley frontage, which is, requires both permission requests and dimensional variances. And, and the piers are non-illuminated, so Mr. Ryan-
Correct, we understand that.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
So I just need a motion.
Okay. So, okay, I'm gonna go ahead here.
Thank you.
So with regard to, Patty, do you want me to do one by one, or can I do?
As long as you identify those items, one, two, five, and eight, if that's your interest.
So this, this is going to be for item one, two, five, and eight. So this is with regard to the masonry walls, the gate, Devon Gables, and the piers and the landscape walls, and I think that's-
What about the two five-foot-high entry gates, I mean?
Do they have to be five foot?
Yeah.
You can, even if number five was four feet, would that, that would still need a-
Because it's in the front, frontage.
So it would still be our-
It's the dimensional variance.
So there's, there's gonna be a fence all the way around. Yeah.
Yep. And it's, and it's moved in and screened.
I have a problem with that. Okay, how about, could, could you make the entry gate four feet? I mean, I, you know, I'm, because I, I'm trying to, you know, make a motion here, I need to find consensus with the board, and I have a sense that we don't have it.
I totally understand, so you, you got a five-foot masonry fence in order that you get that extra buffer, and which connects to the gate, so the sense of security, five foot is, gives a better buffer sense of security as opposed to four foot. And that's the reason we wanted to transition into a four-foot fence beyond that point. So it only goes up to the gate, and then beyond that, everything drops to four foot. The fence, actually, the highest point on the edges is the five-foot, FYI.
Somebody can jump over that fence just as quickly as a four-foot fence.
Well, makes it, makes it just a little bit challenging, somebody has to be a little more agile, I guess.
It's all landscaping, the entire, entire front entry, so those walls all be behind evergreen.
And it's not as impactful either to Adam's point, because of the amount of landscaping and screening, so the, the hardscape gets softened by the amount of landscape that goes in front of this as well.
So you can make the motion, we can discuss it. Why don't you do that? Why don't you do that, I just.
Okay, let's just do that. So with regard to the appeal at 3930 Devon Gables Court, this is for items one, two, five, and eight. I'll start with the permission request. So in regard to that request, I'm going to approve that it be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant demonstrated compliance with section 42-7.6 standards because the, the location of the accessory structures are not going to hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property because they will be fully screened 12 months out of the year with evergreen screening, and therefore the neighbors will not be able to see it. As far as the dimensional variance for these same items at Devon Gables, 3930, I'm going to move that that also be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant demonstrated all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the location of the slot and having multiple frontages. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that these will all be, again, these will all be screened 12 months out of the year with evergreens. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, again, given its location in the, in the center of all four of these frontages, and this is not self-created due to the reasons stated. I will add to that, that you will have to get all permits within one year. You have to get them before you start construction. And for the piers, they have to be non-illuminated. And although I've said it before, I'm going to just stress it. Everything has to be screened 12 months out of the year with evergreen screening.
Support.
A motion and support, discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so it's a roll call.
I'll call.
Okay, so, Fakie?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
No.
Ford?
Yes.
Giogrande?
No.
Henry?
Yes.
Gittleman?
Yes.
And Barnett?
Yes.
Motion carries. I have the two.
All right, so those requests again, so now, let's just go in order then, the pool, which is three, seven, and 12.
Okay, I did have one clarification on this. The ground-mounted mechanical, you said it's going inside the cabana?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay, which, so that, because we typically, the ordinance requires it to be adjacent to the residential building.
Correct.
So I guess this is a little bit better because then you really can't see it because it's inside the cabana.
Yep, and hear, or it won't hear it either.
Okay.
But you're right, it's not adjacent to the residence.
So what's the next thing?
Okay, let's just go ahead here. So this is with regard to items three, seven, and 12. I'm going to start with the permission request. And this is at. Okay, so we'll, I'll go, just, maybe we'll just start down with just number three.
Okay, if that's, if that's easier, that's good.
Okay, so let's just do the approval now.
Okay.
Proposed next near the pool. So that, I'm going to move that it be approved as submitted based on information presented. The applicant demonstrated compliance with section 42-7, six, seven, 42-7.6 standards because this accessory structure is going to be screened 12 months out of the year, and it is within the setbacks. So there is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. As far as the dimensional variance for this, because of the frontages, I move also that it be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant demonstrated all standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance is unduly burdensome because of the location of this in the township and the multiple frontages. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that it is going to be screened and it is within the township setbacks. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given its location in the township and the multiple frontages, and this is not self-created due to the reasons stated. I'll add to this also that it has, any permits for construction, sorry, it's been a long night. Any permits for construction have to be, you have to get them before you start construction. You should get them within one year of approval. And this will, accessory structure will have to be screened 12 months out of the year with evergreens.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? That request is granted. All right, so you want to take?
Number seven.
Seven, yep.
Okay, so this is the cabana, the. Do we need?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, like, I just want to skip that for now, because you just go to number 12. I'll move that this permission request be approved as submitted for the ground mechanical inside the cabana. The applicant demonstrated compliance with section 42-7.6 standards because the accessory structure is going to be concealed from view 12 months out of the year, so it does not inhibit any neighbors. With regard to the dimensional variance for this, I'm going to move that that also be approved as submitted. Compliance with strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the location of the cabana and they're, they're going to put it inside the cabana. So there is no injustice to the adjoining neighbor by reason of the fact, again, it's going to be inside the cabana, cannot be seen or heard. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given its location in the township, and this is not self-created due to the reasons stated. And finally, for that, all permits should be obtained within one year, obtained prior to construction, and that doesn't need screening, obviously, because it's inside the pool cabana.
Support.
Motion and support, discussion. So just, seems like this has to go with the pool. You're taking this before that's all, so if you deny this, or you approve this and don't have the pool, then that would be my observation about doing this.
Oh, that way, I see.
So it seems like you really need to have the pool.
Do we vote first? Did we get a vote on the last item?
No, we didn't. Could you go?
Should I withdraw my motion and?
Yes.
So that's what I'll do. So I'll withdraw the motion, so, and then go, you know, I guess to number seven. I, can we open this back up with them just for a moment?
Open back up with?
With the applicant.
If you could ask a question, yeah.
Yeah, because I'm getting the sense that the board is not going to have consensus on this item, so I'm wondering if there was any, you know, can we have less lazy rivers? You know, just anything that we can do? And if not, I mean, I understand, but I'm just, you know, trying to pursue this.
This is the one that includes the. Wait, is this the cabana?
Yeah.
Is this the cabana that's connected to the home?
Yes, seventy, right, so it's really seventy on 12, but I was doing 12 first because I thought we could get.
Separate, but then if you don't have the pool, then.
Okay.
I mean, you could take the cabana separately, but.
I think nine is connected to the home, is that?
Correct.
Was that the one?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is the pool.
Oh, I see, yeah, 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 I see it, number nine.
So you have to.
Okay.
You have to feel okay with the pool for seven, and then seven would necessitate 12. So why don't we make a motion and then just have discussion?
Okay, fine, so I'll just go ahead and we'll do what happens here. So with regard to, so I'm going to do seven and 12 together now.
Yes.
With regard to the permission request, I'm going to move that it be approved as submitted based on 42-7.6 standards. The, it has been complied with because these are all going to be screened 12 months out of the year, and they are within the setbacks. And so there is no hindrance to adjoining neighbors. As far as the dimensional variance, there were the practical difficulty based on the ordinance. It would be unduly burdensome because of the frontages, so, you know, just by nature of what's happening here. There is no justice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that they will be screened, and they are within the setbacks. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given its location in the township and the multiple frontages, and this is not self-created due to the reasons stated. I will add that permits have to be obtained within one year, obtained prior to construction, and these, all of these accessory structures will have to be screened 12 months out of the year with evergreen screening.
I have a comment for discussion.
I need support for the motion.
Support.
So I have motion and support, discussion?
I view that location to be the front yard, but there's just no comment.
Okay. Do you, do you have any other feelings about the pool there? Do you, are you?
It's the front yard.
Okay.
I don't know where you can approve pools in the front yard.
So you're probably not in favor. Anybody else that's uncomfortable with the pool in that location?
I am.
Okay.
I feel that's the front yard as well.
Okay, well then, let's take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I'm opposed.
So we take a. Off the key?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
No.
Ford?
Yes.
Giogrande?
Yes.
Ford? I mean, I'm sorry, Henry?
No.
Gittleman?
No.
Barnett for the?
No.
Motion fails. Four to three.
So someone has to make a motion.
Or, yeah, we didn't know, or that's it?
That's it.
Don't we, oh, I see, okay, fine. So, like I said, it's been a really long night.
No, you're, you're, I appreciate your courage.
Is that right, number nine? Because you did eight done, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so the next one is number nine.
Yeah, well.
Which is the high, the 22-foot-high gazebo, okay, on the second-story terrace, okay.
So, okay, so you're now going to, okay, that's fine. You want to do that one?
Didn't we do item eight?
We did.
Yeah, that was, that was up at the first motion. You did one, two, and eight. We've now done three, seven, and 12. I was just going in order, I was going to do the six and 10.
Oh, okay, fine, let's do that because that's going to be easier, actually. So with regard to the gazebo and Mystic Valley Drive and the fountain, two-foot-high patio located in the Devon Gable frontage, and set back 40 feet. I actually want to clarify, you said nobody can see this fountain, right? From the street, public view?
That's what we believe, yes, ma'am.
That's the screen.
Yes.
Yeah, it's the requirement.
Yes, yes.
So with regard to those, with regard to the permission request for numbers six and 10, I'm going to move that it be approved as submitted. The applicant demonstrated compliance with 42-7.6 standards because the location of the accessory structures are not going to hinder or discourage adjacent use of property because they are within the setbacks and are going to be screened 12 months out of the year with evergreen screening. With regard to the dimensional variance, the applicant has shown practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance is unduly burdensome because they have multiple frontages. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that these, all of these accessory structures are going to be screened 12 months out of the year. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given its unique location and multiple frontages, and it's not self-created due to the reasons stated. All permits should be made within one year, obtained prior to construction. You have to have evergreens 12 months out of the year. And I think that's it for that one.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion?
Yes, do we know the intention of this gazebo?
Intention?
Yeah.
It's for the use and enjoyment of a family that lives there. And their occasional guests, I mean.
Outdoor space.
Yeah.
Are you asking, like, whether, what are the utilities inside, or how is it?
There's no illumination.
Is there electricity, is it?
There's no illumination. I don't, is there electricity?
What kind of illumination?
There is no illumination, I said, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
Yes. But I'm just, if you didn't hear me, I apologize. Trying to be clear.
So, so we had a motion and support, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That request is granted, or those requests are given, that's six and 10. Now we have the retaining walls, number 11.
Six and 10, now number 11, okay.
We have two left.
So the retaining wall, the need for this is topography or security?
It's, it's to support the driveway, right, so the change in grade there.
So it is because of the topography? Okay, then I can go ahead with that then.
Yes, you can.
Okay, so number 11, the retaining wall, the permission request, actually, let me ask you this, is it going to be screened?
Yeah, it's, it, the retaining walls are being screened, the two nine-foot will show. They have to be screened by township ordinance with evergreens, so there'll be evergreen screening on the two tiers of the retaining wall.
Okay.
Yeah, the entire wall.
Yep.
So this, I'm going to move that it be approved as requested. They demonstrated compliance with 42-7.6 standards because the location of this structure is not going to hinder or discourage use of property because it is going to be screened and it is within the township setbacks. For the dimensional variance, the applicant demonstrated practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance is unduly burdensome because of the topography of this home and its being up on a hill, and the need for additional reinforcements. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that this retaining wall is going to be screened 12 months out of the year. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, again, given the topography and sloping nature, and this is not self-created due to the reasons stated. For the retaining wall, you will have to get the permits within 12 months, obtain them prior to construction, and again, screen 12 months out of the year with evergreen. And I'm emphasizing that over and over because
We got it.
it has to be screened.
Yep.
Loud and clear there.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? That request is granted. All right, now we have the sports court, item four. It's a 10-foot-high fence, eight-foot-high evergreens, propose to screen the fence.
Okay. So with regard to the item number four, the sports court, I'm going to move that it be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant demonstrated compliance with 42-7.6 standards because the accessory sports court is going to be within the setbacks and fully screened from view 12 months out of the year. The dimensional variance, I move that that also be approved. The applicant demonstrated all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance is unduly burdensome because of multiple frontages. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors because the sports court will be, it's within the setbacks, and it's going to be screened 12 months out of the year. Unique circumstances have been demonstrated, given the multiple frontages on this lot. This is not self-created due to the reasons stated. I'll add for the sports court, no illumination. And I will also say, it's, the use of the sports court is limited to daytime hours. And I believe that's all. And if I didn't say it, I'll just say it again, it has to be screened 12 months out of the year.
Support.
So I have motion and support, discussion. So, Mr. Ryan, I had a couple notes here in our packet here. It says it's eight-foot-high evergreens, but I went during the questions, I answered, are there the spruce that are 16 to 20 feet along the sports court? Did I get that right?
Yeah, this is going to show.
Just, you can just answer it.
But there's multiple layers, there's three levels of screening. So along the street, those are 16 to 20-foot spruce.
Okay.
There's elevated another three foot.
All right, so those spruce are going to be higher than the fence?
Yes.
Okay.
And I have one question about the fence. Is it a fenced fence, or is it like a netting?
It's a netting.
It's a netting, okay.
Okay.
I view that this, again, is like half in the front yard, but.
Right, okay, that's good. So any other discussion on the motion?
I view that this is halfway, kind of halfway in the front yard, essentially.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed?
Roll call. Fakie?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
No.
Ford?
Yes.
Giogrande?
No.
Henry?
Yes.
Gittleman?
Yes.
And Barnett?
Yes.
Motion passes, one, two, three, four, five, to two.
So if my math is right, that is it.
No, we have number nine.
One more.
Oh, I'm sorry, nine.
Gazebo, number six, or number nine.
Number nine.
I put a check mark by it. Okay, number nine. 22-foot-high gazebo located on a second-story terrace.
Motion is being crafted.[1736.11]
It's as tall as the house?
No, it's shorter than the house.
Four feet shorter.
It was reduced by four feet, which was...
Right, right.
And so the sketch shows the markup where they reduced the...
Yeah, so I'll say, um, you know, the house is already like kind of looming, and I don't know if we... Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
With regard to the appeal at 3930 Devon Gables Court for item nine here, which is a proposed 20-foot, 22-foot-high gazebo located on a secondary-story terrace with a maximum height from grade of 34 feet and located in the Mystic Valley Drive frontage. I move to, um... We'll go with the permission request first. I move to deny this request as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did not demonstrate compliance with Section 42, yes, 7.6 standards due to, let's see, at least one reason here. The location of the accessory structure, the size of the accessory structure is not compatible with adjoining properties based on the fact that the roof lines do not tie in and that's something that cannot be screened from neighbors. So... If denied, we don't have verbiage for denial, so I guess that's it.
I can't build it, so...
Correct.
Support.
So motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to deny, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm opposed.
Me too, no.
Okay, let's do a roll call. Um, so, um, Fakie?
So, so yes to the denial?
Yes, you're voting for denial of the request. Yes means no.
Okay. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Um, Ford?
Yes.
Giogrande?
Yes.
Henry?
No.
Um, Gittelman?
Yes.
Barnett?
No.
Um, so the motion to deny does carry, um, five to go.
So that request is denied?
So that's it, I think that's all.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone's participation.
That'd be great if it's black and bright.
Have a break like an intermission or something.
Yeah, that's the longest I've ever spent on a single thing, I think. Either my incompetency or... So calling item one, 7180 Fair Hill. Is the applicant ready for item one? So please approach, give us your name and address.
Lloyd Silberman, 7180 Fair Hill Road, Bloomfield Hills.
So you have a ground-mounted mechanical unit that you'd like in the front yard?
Yes, it's actually already there. It was installed about a year ago. For the first nine months after it was installed, I didn't hear anything, and then I received a notice saying that there was a complaint, and there's an ordinance saying it can't be in the front, which was news to me. Then I found out that the contractor hadn't pulled a permit, which was also news to me. Mea culpa. I'm a property manager. I should have known better to double-check that, but that's what happened. It's put in front. It is screened by a patio with shrubbery in front of it. The main reason that it was put in front was it was a change on the day they came out to install it. Previously, it was going to be put on the side of our house, outside our den, and when the installers came out, they said that because the gas meter is in front, that it was better to put it there because long stretches of a gas line would make it prone to condensation in the line, which could damage the generator.
How, what's the screening?
Well, I haven't put the screening yet because if you're going to require that I move the generator, I didn't want to put the screening in, but the application says it's going to be the height of the generator and it's gonna blend in with the house. And I've done some research online, and I have some ideas of things that are available to do that, and I will gladly do that.
And when would you do that if we granted the... Because we'll put a time limit on it.
Yeah, I would say, give me 60 days, just in case it's in short supply from Amazon.
That'll work for us. I'd like to open this to the public. Anyone like to comment? Close the public hearing. Bring him back for questions or motion.
What, what, I know you said that you did some research on the screening, but what kind of, what are you anticipating? Or what are your thoughts?
Excuse me, let me hand out a letter from my next-door neighbor who's the closest to this. Thank you. Who is in favor of leaving it there. The kinds of screens I saw online are panels, horizontal panels with posts on either side of the generator and then extending backwards. So I have to find something that's the right width and depth.
Right, because I was seeing, because it looks like you have a path in front of it, so I was, you didn't have a lot of space for...
Right, couldn't put evergreens.
You couldn't, yeah, right, you couldn't put evergreens, so, okay. I just was curious to see what you were thinking.
So, put that in the motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion. In regards to the appeal at 7180 Fair Hill Road for a dimensional variance for an existing generator located in the front yard, I move that the variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of, first of all, having a generator is very much, very needed these days, and having it located where it is because of the gas line would make sense. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, for one. The closest neighbor has given support, as well as the applicant has, has plans on providing screening. The unique circumstances of the property, again, because of where the gas hookup is in the front of the home, the contractor said that that was probably the most appropriate place, and because of that, it is not self-created. If approved, applicant for all necessary permits must be made within five business days for the existing generator. An additional screening, um, it doesn't necessarily have to be evergreen screening, should be required to make sure that it is screened from public view. It must meet and exceed the height of the generator as well.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling item two, 2770 McIntosh.
Hello, board. Good evening. My name's Ellen Yerkes. I'm with Antonelli Landscape, and I'm here for the property of 2770 McIntosh Lane to bring up, oh, perfect, we have... Hopefully those are large enough for you to see. I'm here on two different circumstances on the property that were, that are built, so these are existing circumstances. I want to explain exactly what happened and hope you can see why we're here tonight. The pillars, the piers on the left side of the screen there are even on top, but are not even in height. There's a step, there's, we had to play around with the fencing to make that look right and not completely off. So if you were to put your flowerpots on it, they're at the same height, the piers are at the same height, and this is to accommodate the four feet that is required around a pool so that the fence is four feet high, so that had to maintain all the way around. So these pillars ended up being taller than the previous piers that you graciously were able to allow on our variance prior. So now that these have been built to six feet high, we are here to, to show you why they are larger. So I hope that makes sense. I'm happy to answer any questions on that. And the second reason we're here is regarding the pool equipment and the new location compared to what we presented to you prior, where it was gonna go. After getting into the build of that, they put a generator, AC units, there's a window. Apparently to the code, we couldn't even put it, put our pool equipment adjacent to the home. So it's now located on the other side of that walkway, which, if you can shift to the other side, it's a little more in the other drawing. So this is where it ended up. It's completely screened with arborvitae already and is also fenced in. So this, that is the arborvitae, those, arborvitae are currently being protected from the wind so that you don't just have them dying, right? So this is all the way back from the road, so there is that space, the fence, the arborvitae to shield it. Those arborvitae are not just on the front side, but also the side that goes towards the neighbor's adjacent lot. However, that neighbor also has their own row of evergreen screenings.
So, uh, we approved a four-foot pier and you put in a six-foot?
Yeah, the, um, picture there, yeah, on the left is... That's okay, thank you. I'm not great with tools, okay. The, um, distance here was higher than we were anticipating because, really, if it was what we submitted, which would be about this height for the fence, that's what we expected. And we had, we did build this up, so it matched the other one. So there's the picture previously, if you want to go back to it. You can see that we built, we built them high, that one higher to be the same as the other one. Can you go back to the other photo? One more.
I'm not sure which photo you want.
The beginning, please.
Oh.
I'm trying to make it quick, but I also want to be thorough so you guys understand. So this one is at the height of the fence. Then there's a step here. So the gate comes over.
Got it.
And then I'm like, well, I don't want to build that.
Right. If they were built four feet, there's a difference because of the step.
Yes, the, the grade is a little bit lower. Yep, so those pillars are now the same height.
And then how did the mechanical end up being...
Yeah, and I wish he was, um, able to speak more on that, the pool builder. However, to my understanding, the side of the side here where we designed it, right there, there's a generator and a window and an AC unit that ended up blocking up this, so it was a new generator. Or the window, like, there was some sort of code that building has about how far away it can be from a window?
Right.
Pool equipment, okay, so I'm not, I'm sorry, I don't know that, like, off of my head, but that, he was advised to move that, which we knew would result in this meeting. So we screened it. I said, well, you can't do anything in Bloomfield without giving me these trees. So those are planted.
We've seen many situations where the person that has nothing to do with the mistake is sent to get the variance. So you can kind of say, hey, I don't know, but that's, that's not your fault. Any other questions? Open this up to the public. Any comment? Close the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion.
Thank you.
So with regard to the permission request, as well as the dimensional, the permission request required for the non-illuminated piers, as well as a dimensional variance, which is required for the pool equipment not being immediately adjacent to the residential building, I move that, um, if he approved... Do you want me to put the address in there since I skipped that by mistake?
Yes.
The permission request and the dimensional variance request at 2770 McIntosh Lane. I move that, uh, please be approved. And, um, as requested, based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the fact that there is no additional space to put the generator or the pool equipment, excuse me, and, um... You know, putting it close to the house was just, there was no space. So there's no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason that it is thoroughly screened. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given that there is a step there, at least with regard to the, um... The piers and with regard to the pool equipment, I guess the unique circumstances would be that, you know, there's a step or a sloping, and these are not self-created due to the fact that the home is already in existence. So if approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
Additional evergreen planting shall be required to screen the pool equipment from public view and must meet or exceed the height of the pool equipment at the time of planting. I do want to state that what's there is... Absolutely, thank you.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you very much. Enjoy your evening.
Welcome. Thank you. Item three, 1933 Lone Pine.
Yes, sir. Good evening, board. My name's Edward Petersmark, homeowner at 1933 Lone Pine, looking for approval for a now-existing shed in the rear of my property.
Anything that's special about this shed? It looks like it's got some...
Yeah, it looks like a chicken coop because it is a chicken coop.
That was my first reaction.
So, yeah, it wasn't intended to be, the Amish built this, and they did it because my wife has a cat that she likes to keep out on our back porch, a back porch. I eliminated the stairs going down because the cat would run out, the hawks fly at the cat. She wanted a place for the cat to play, come in and out, store stuff that was under our deck, and so, uh, this is what I ended up with. You don't communicate directly with the Amish.
Chicken, and you're not, you're gonna put any chickens in?
Well, at, at this point, and you know, that was asked by the township as I was going back and forth over this hearing and the elevations and the design and the intent, all that stuff. I don't want to pigeonhole myself and say I'll never put chickens in the thing because who knows if I want to do that one day, so I don't want to put myself on the record saying I'm not gonna do that. They did ask...
You know that if you do, you gotta come back here. That's all I want.
Yeah, no, that, that would be my intent.
Because we're approving this doesn't mean we're approving the chicken.
Yeah, no, fair enough.
This is to deny chickens in the past.
Got it, yeah, and there are letters of support from every neighbor surrounding, adjoining, everything.
Just want to make sure that's clear.
That should be in your file, both, both for the...
We believe you. We like, like your honesty.
It's a cat coop.
Any other questions? Open this to the public. Comment on the cat coop. Close it. Bring him back for a motion.
Okay, with regard to the permission request at 1933 Lone Pine Road, I'm going to move that it be approved as submitted. The applicant demonstrated compliance with Section 42, yes, 7.6 standards because the accessory structure is going to be within the setbacks and it is going to be screened 12 months out of the year with evergreens. Dimensional variance is required, and I'm going to move that it be approved because there is a practical difficulty in this instance, compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance is unduly burdensome because there's multiple, um, frontages here. Is that right?
You know, I'm not sure the technicality of it. The Lone Pine, obviously a frontage, but the, the other road is actually technically an easement. It's a private drive for one of the houses at the back of the...
Yeah, it's so, yes, thank you. So given its location in the township that is the, um, burden, there is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that there is actually lots of support from the neighborhood, and it's going to be screened and it's within the setbacks. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, again, given its location on the township on that law, or rather Lone Pine, excuse me. This is not self-created due to the reasons stated. Because this is already existing, you have five days to get the permit. And you cannot, I'm just gonna emphasize, no chickens are included in this request. You would have to come back to us to do that. And, you know, it's hard for me to say if you need additional screening, but what I will say is that the shed has to be screened. So if it's not fully screened out, you need to put additional evergreens.
Um, so with regard to that, do you mean just with the adjoining neighbors? Because it is, it is fully screened.
It was from public view. So we want it screened from public view. So neighbors, if someone's driving down Lone Pine, they should not be able to see it. So the evergreens have to meet or exceed the height of the shed at the time that you plant them. You can't plant like a one-foot arborviant, say, oh, it's...
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah. Okay. Yeah, there's only one, one view that it would be visible, and if you're looking at the house right now, to the right side of the house, I mean, there might be three degrees of view as you pass by walking that it's not screened. The house has gone, undergone, I should say, the property's undergone some very extensive grading work because it was built in a floodplain. And so there is almost no other area in which we're able to plant trees, maybe directly in front of it there, between the house and the, and the shed itself. I don't know, I'll have to look at it. If that's the demand of the board, then that's what I'm gonna have to do.
Does the board have a feeling about this?
No, he's gonna look at it, I think, I think...
I have, um, in, in...
Yeah, we can just say...
...conjunction with the township, put together a very, um, described landscaping plan, which we executed, you know, in accordance and, and, um, direction, I should say, with direction from the township. They've been out to that site many, many times and understand that there is almost no other place for us to plant trees, but I'll try. I'll do everything I can to comply.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted. Uh, item four, 4860 Tullamore.
Good evening. Nerd start at 4860 Tullamore. Moved into the house last summer, and there was a shed from the existing owner that was up against the house. I thought, you know, silly B, let's put a shed up for, there's no basements in the neighborhood, need some storage, I've got five kids at home. Put the shed up. A few days later, I got a piece of correspondence from the township come in for this, so, um, you know, I put the shed up. It's at the back end of the property. It's within the setbacks. It's screened behind by trees with the neighbors behind. It's on the garage side of the house, so it's not really, you can see it from the street, but I'm happy to screen or do anything to help cover it up.
Jeff, any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
I got to open it to the public?
I'm sorry.
Dr. Kenny? It's been a long day. Open this to the public, anyone like to comment? Close the public hearing, or you can make your motion.
Thank you very much. I apologize. With regard to the permission request and dimensional variance at North, oh, sorry, 4860 Tullamore Drive, I move with the permission request to approve it as submitted, based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the size of this accessory structure is compatible with sheds in the area and other sheds that we have seen. With regard to the dimensional variance, I also move to approve it as requested, based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the fact that, you know, that he is living in his home, he has five kids and needs to have some extra storage. Permission request. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because it will be screened with. And unique circumstances with the property due to the fact that it is, you know, used to be at the side of the house but is neatly tucked into the backyard. And it's not self-created, I'm going to say that because the size of the lot, it appears to be significant, you know, there's some significant space and it's not on top of any other adjoining neighbors. So if approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within five days for this existing shed. And additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the shed from public view and must meet or exceed the height of the shed at the time of planting.
Support.
Motion to support, any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. Calling item 56756 Bashan Drive.
Good evening, my name is Jared Hoffman. I live at 6756 Bashan Drive in Bloomfield Hills. We are before the board seeking a variance to the dog fencing ordinance, which requires a fence be set in 25 feet in from the back property line and 16 feet in from the side lot line. We have a 14-pound miniature poodle mix. And the purpose of the fence is not for containing our dog, but rather for containing our 17-month-old daughter. Our property backs up to the St. Owens Church parking lot, which is a heavily trafficked parking lot. There's very sparse trees, which you can see in the photograph, separating my property from the church. And so for safety reasons, I would like to allow my daughter to have full space to play and be secure from people coming through the church parking lot, through our property, which has been done in the past.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Do you have any kind of screening or plantings?
Yes, if the fence is approved, we do plan at a later date to put evergreen trees across the entire perimeter of the property for screening from our neighbors as well as from the church.
So that's typically on the outside of the fence?
Yes.
And where's the fence going to be placed?
Our property is currently fenced on both sides from existing fences with our neighbors. We are asking permission to fence along the back perimeter and then out from the back corner of our home to the existing fence on the lot line.
Okay, so where you're putting it though, will there be room for evergreen plantings?
Yes.
On your property?
Yes.
And how much, when you say later, how much is later?
Within this summer. So we'd plan to put the fence in probably in April and mid to late summer, we'd put the evergreen screening in unless required to put it in sooner.
And you said you're going to connect this to an existing fence that's.
Yes, there's existing fences on both of our neighbors' properties. We've received a letter from our homeowners association as well as one of our immediate neighbors voicing that they would have no concern with a variance being granted.
Yes, we have that.
So.
Can I make a motion?
Well, wait, I got to open this to the public hearing. Anyone here like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing. The only thing I'll say is we had to, I think we had to find out when he's putting the trees in. I was thinking 90 days gives him to June, so that'd be my suggestion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, go right ahead.
In regard to the appeal at 6756 Bashan Drive.
Bashan Drive.
For the accessory structure, I move to be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the accessory structure shall be harmonious to the neighborhood given that the neighbors expressed that they would be okay with it. For, I think that's, that's it. For, in regard to the appeal at 6756 Bashan Drive for the dimensional variance, I move the variance to be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because it would create a less safe environment for his child. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of letters of support and expression of support from his neighbors. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given that it backs up to a parking lot and it is not self-created due to the fact that it backs up to a parking lot. If approved, the motion must include, sorry, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. And additional evergreen plantings may be, are required to screen the fence from public view. And as we discussed, that would be by June.
Okay.
Support.
So I have a motion to support, any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next item. 75 North Berkshire. Is the applicant ready? Here for 75 North Berkshire.
I move that we move this to the, at the end of the meeting?
Support.
So I have a motion to postpone support to the end of the meeting. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, is it yours?
Oh.
So maybe it should be.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Oh.
Oh, you want to have some public? You want to, you want to give public comment on that item?
We can.
All right, so let's, we can do that, so why don't we? No, you've been here, you've suffered long enough, so let's. So let's, let's make a motion to put it back on the table.
So motion to listen to the item number six now.
All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So give us your name and address.
Doug Willoughby, I'm at 71 South Berkshire. That piece of property sits, there's no pictures of or anything like that. It's a large house that doesn't fit into the neighborhood, can't legislate taste, that's fine. Sits on a very narrow point, very close to the point. They're going to put a pool in the back, which is in the front yard of two neighbors, 57 and 38, I think it is, is the next one down. There's essentially in the front yard of them. It's in my front yard also, I can't see anything on that side. This has been going on now for four years. They put the porta potty in four years ago. There it is, that's where you got to come around the other side to see it. So I'm not trying to deny them having a pool and their enjoyment and everything else like that. That's not the issue. Three years without landscaping, three years of construction. I'm at 71, across the island from there. 57 is the one to the right and, no, 80, yeah, 57 is on the right, 38. It's essentially in their front yard where this pool is going in. My concern is they won't get the screening up for another three years of the progress that they're making. So all I'm asking at this point is, you know, when they come back and we see where they want to actually put the pool, all right, you know, hopefully they'll put it around back, but I'm seeing, there's really no back, right? There's where they're sitting, so they can only go so far. Yeah, they can only go so far, and I understand it. It was a big house on a very small lot, fine, whatever, you know. We have to have a sense of humor about these things, right? I've lived there 40 years, no, I'm sorry, 32 years. These people have lived there 35 years. 47. So we love the neighborhood, it's all about character for the neighborhood. We want to be accommodating to all our neighbors. But what they're doing right now is testing everyone's patience in that neighborhood. So I guess what I want to get on record here, and if there's a way that you can get to the builder or the owner and say, hey, it's time to move the porta potty at the very least. It's sitting on, it's literally sitting in the front yard of 57. I mean, it's like right across the street, sitting up on a hill. You think these people had it bad with a house on the hill? We had a porta potty for four years on the hill there, you know? This is a nice neighborhood, it's a one-of-a-kind neighborhood, we love it. And they're kind of porta pottying it, if you get my drift.
It's been a remarkable evening. Is there anyone else that would like, did you want to speak on this or you just agree with everything he said?
Okay. Thank you, I apologize.
All right, no, that's okay.
I would like to speak because I'm 59.
Oh, I didn't see it back there, Jasmine. We had the porta potty right there.
All right. We want to hear everyone. Okay.
So I'm Jasmine Hartfield, I'm at 59 South Berkshire. I really wanted to come and just have an opportunity to hear them because I would love to have some neighbors for my four kids and some more community. I do love the neighborhood. I am concerned about everything that Doug mentioned, specifically because we moved into our home in September of 2022. And about six months after that, they started building, they tore down like our center, the center, I don't even know what to call it, island of the neighborhood where our bus stop was. There have been like construction workers, huge trucks, just, it's not safe. We have a lot of kids at the bus stop, so they relocated, which is great. But I've had some trouble with the builders because they don't have the resources to do what they need. So I get constant knocking at my door, asking if they can connect the hose to our to our well pump. I have given them permission to do that. I've asked, you know, how long is it going to be connected? They're like, oh, it's two weeks, but it turns into two months. I have a 15-year-old, but I also have the youngest, a two-and-a-half-year-old. And so she's riding her scooter in our driveway, but their hose has been there. It got so bad to the point I disconnected it and I just went and threw it over into the property. And they came back, offered $100 to reconnect. I don't know what that was about, but I did let them reconnect for two days because they claimed that they couldn't get the brick and the mortar on the house without having the access to our water. After that, they came knocking because they needed to come into my home during the winter to access a gas line. And our house was built in 1923, so, I mean, I'll be honest.
So I know this is important to you, but it's not directly related to the request for the variance, so.
Well, what I'm saying is.
Deeply, badly that this happened, but is there anything else related?
Well, it is specifically because they have not had the resources.
Right, so you don't trust, you don't trust that they could fulfill.
I don't trust, and I don't know how long they're going to continue knocking.
Just say, based on the way the house is built, don't have trust, so.
Yes.
That's loud and clear.
Sorry.
Okay. It's just, it's been a remarkable evening.
It has. So many counseling sessions this evening, it's just been great. These are all yours, okay. This one is mine. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
You're a very nice person.
Is there, yes, thanks, thank you so much. Any other time, I would let you go on. Anyone else? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing on this one.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
So with regard to the, I was going to do the permission request. So with regard to the permission request for the proposed spa, I move that this request be denied as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did not demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards due to the fact that the location of the accessory structure would hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property. It is obviously on two frontages, but obviously they're not following, you know, proper time schedules.
Support.
If a. That's it, right?
So I motioned for a discussion. So I get it, the only thing I'll say is typically voting to deny without having the person here is a bit unusual.
Yeah, but actually, I typically agree with you, but in this instance, I feel that it's actually more egregious that they're not here.
Yeah, it kind of is. I just don't want what's preceded this to somehow make us less than our best on this one. That's all.
Yeah.
I just will give that as a cautionary thing because it is unusual to deny without. But would this, would they be able to resubmit or?
Well, if you deny without prejudice, that they could resubmit their exact same proposal. If you just deny it as is, they could not come back with this exact same proposal.
So you guys want to see something different?
Without.
Prejudice? Okay.
Support.
Okay, I can live with that, I could. So I motioned to support, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great work, great work on that one. Thank you, Patty.
Don't just keep my mouth shut from now on.
No, no, I kind of felt that way too, but I'm just thinking, I'm not giving my all to the meeting. I'm running out of gas, okay. Item 7, 7200 Old Mill.
Good evening, Sean Gardella, representing my client, Marvin Summer Yono, who couldn't be here due to family obligations this evening. And I represent Sean Gardella and Associates at 4248 Delamere Court in Royal Oak. We are underway with construction of a home at 7200 Old Mill and here tonight to seek a permission request for a 34-by-36-foot sports court within the building envelope, not illuminated and not fenced. And in addition to that, an eight-foot-by-eight-foot spa that is adjacent to a pool that it will be hopefully in for a permit. That will be 20 inches above pool deck. And then we are also seeking permission for adjacent fire bowls, which you just had the dimensions of in front of you there, that will be on the pool deck but elevated no more than what you see there.
Those are gas and everything.
Those are gas, those are gas.
They are gas, yes.
All right, any other questions from the board? Open this to the public for comment. Close the public hearing.
I can make a motion.
Okay, great.
In regard to the appeal at at 33 Berkshire Glens for 34-by-36 sport court. I'm sorry.
I think each of us is entitled to one, one to two misstatements.
For a sport court, a spa attached to a pool and fire bowls not to exceed four feet in height. I move the request be approved and submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because locations accessory structures will not hinder or discourage adjacent use of property due to the fact that it doesn't, that it's inside the setbacks of the home and will not be deleterious to the neighbors. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen plantings will be required to screen the sports court spa from public view. No illumination permitted. Use of sports court is limited to daytime hours only.
Support.
So I motion to support, any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you, board members.
Item 8, 5045 Diana.
Good evening, Patrick Funky, Michael Doolin Associates, landscape architect and petitioner for Scott and Christine Magaluck at 5045 Diana Drive. Our clients are proposing, we have three variance requests this evening. The first is for a permission request, excuse me, thank you, Andrew. We have a timber constructed pergola constructed of rough-sawn cedar logs. We're trying to create a very unique environment to fit into the large lot, 2.75 acres. Underneath the pergola, we are proposing a seven-foot-by-seven-foot spa integrated into the landscape, completely screened 12 months of the year with evergreen screening around the perimeter. And the last permission request our homeowner had was for a wood burning fire bowl, not gas. He wants the authentic, the clients want the authentic wood burning. We are, minimum distance from any property line to that fire pit location is 165 feet to the rear property line and 175 feet to the north property line. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have, trying to keep it short.
So these are all just permission requests?
All permission requests, sir.
Any questions from the board? This is an extensive landscaping plan with. This is an extensive landscaping plan with a lot of thought.
They call it magical.
Magical, that's gonna be, okay.
Could you do the plan?
Yes.
I mean, it's one of the best we've seen. So open this to the public to comment. No comment, I'll close public hearing and bring it back for a motion.
I'll make a motion. In regards to the appeal at 5045 Diana Drive for the accessory structure of a pergola, hot tub, as well as a wood burning fire pit. I move that the request be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of such an accessory structure is appropriate for the neighborhood as pergolas and hot tubs and fire pits are very appropriate and common. With that, if approved, the motion also includes, must include, applications for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. If you are going to do the planting screening as planned, the landscaping planned, additional evergreen plants may be required to screen the pergola, hot tub and fire pit from public view, which it looks like you have a plan for that already.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. Item 10, 3801 Oakland.
Hey, good evening, Matt Mojer, representing the homeowners at 555 Shadow Lane. We have two requests tonight. One is for a gas fire pit that sits on a patio about halfway down the hill, or not halfway, slightly down the hill. And then the second request is we have a in-ground spa that will have a decorative raised lip around it for architectural purposes. That'll be out of the masonry house stone. So instead of the spa sitting totally in the ground, it's raised about 14 inches out of the ground with just a nice house stone rim. And it's meant to not only be a usable spa, but sort of sculptural piece when they look out their back. The area is quite, quite steep. It goes down from the house to the lake, probably 40 feet or so. One of the reasons, you know, we do have evergreen screening down the sides, but one of the things that we're being careful about here is not to block the neighbors' views as they look across. Because these items are significantly lower than any house, they certainly don't get in the way of anybody's view. So be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? I'll open this to the public for comment. Anyone like to speak? Close public comment, bring it back. All permission requests.
I'll take it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So number, you want to do it?
Sure, I'll do it.
Okay.
Okay. For a motion to, okay. In regards to the appeal at 5555 Shadow Lane for the gas fire pit and spa, I move the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property due to it being in the rear and adequately screened. If, so application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Upon completion, additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the spa and fire pit from public view.
Support.
I motion and support, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
I got the next one too. Matt Mojer again, representing the homeowners at 3801 Oakland Drive. This is a permission request for a fireplace feature on a newly proposed patio space in the rear yard of this residence. Everything is within the required setbacks and the property already has a bit of evergreen screening and we're adding a bit more so that there's no views from the neighbor's house. All the height requirements are within ordinance and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'll open this to the public, anyone like to comment? Close public hearing, bring it back to the board.
In regards to the appeal at 3801 Oakland Drive for the accessory structure of a proposed fireplace, I move that the request be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of accessory structure is appropriate for the neighborhood. As we can see, most people are putting in fireplaces, fire pits, fire bowls, so this is very common. If approved, the motion must include, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the fireplace from public view.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. Item 11 has been removed from the agenda. Moving to item 12, 228 Orange Lake.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Mike Gordon, the architect for the project for Moise Gordon Associates Architects at 4351 Delamere Court, Royal Oak. The homeowner, Chris Hughes, is here with us tonight. We're requesting permission to add an additional garage space of 657 square feet where 1,0795 is allowed. The proposed main home has a fully developed walkout lower level proposed with very little storage. The additional garages will not only provide the needed storage for the owners, in addition, multiple personal vehicles that they own. We live in a car culture and multiple car garages are quite common in residential development. You know, as an individual, I have three cars of my own. The additional garages, they have multiple home, you know, cars that they own. The courtyard design will shield the adjacent properties from the vehicle's headlights and from looking at walls of multiple garage doors. Further, with only 5% of lot coverage of all structures, this will have minimal impact on the property. We look, we hope you look favorably on this request and are prepared to answer the questions that you have.
Any questions? Can we just see an aerial of the lot? I thought this was. So that's the most unusual.
Unusual lot.
You see in the upper right-hand corner, it's kind of like the head of a dog or something there, so that's never had.
It kind of looks like a fly swatter too.
A fly swatter too, yeah. Fly swatter with a piece of.
Yes, it's very unique property.
Piece of meat, okay. So open this for the public, anyone like to comment? Couple people.
Hi, I'm James Clements, 3005 Croft Way. I'm treasurer of the Orange Lake Hills Association. That's the condo association directly north and east of this new facility. One of the issues that we're experiencing in this area, if you'll notice, there's four units within our association. So there's four units within our association, these four units here, that are suffering from severe flooding. That's because, and also in this area, frequently Loscher Drive is flooded. And these homes over here on the, in Bloomfield Hills are also flooded during heavy rains. What's causing the flooding is runoff from Anthony Lane, this property here and some property here. So all of this, these properties here are causing runoff, dumping water into this area. And there's a berm here that's attempting control of flooding on Loscher. But if you're familiar with this area, during heavy rains, Loscher is frequently closed because of flooding. One of our concerns about this construction is before there was a smaller home on this facility with less hardscape. With the addition, additional square footage of this home, the additional hardscape is going to create additional flooding in our association. And we're already having to talk with an engineer about how to address the flooding. So if this property generates additional stormwater runoff, we're going to have four units that are frequently flooded. During 2021, 211 Orange Lake Drive was flooded for a good bit of the, I don't remember, 2021 was a really wet year. That home was flooded because of all the flooding in this area, the basement. And the homeowner had to rebuild their basement because of the flooding caused by all this erosion in this area. So what I'm requesting is that the board require the homeowner to demonstrate that all this construction is not going to create additional storm runoff that's going to create additional problems because we are already experiencing problems at 211. But 216, 325 and 335 are also at risk of flooding if additional water is dumped on this property. So if there are any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else you'd like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Hasselt Baksh and I live at 230 Orange Lake Drive. And I don't have an issue with the garage, the attached garage. But if you look at the first plot, that one, yeah. So if you look at it, that square that runs in, how the driveway comes off of Orange Lake Drive and then goes to the back of the, of the property. What is the plan, what is the estimate of guest parking that might take place? And how would that impact the property and the issue that the other gentleman brought up about flooding? I get a lot of water coming through my property as well. So my question is, it's not just the parking in the attached garage, it's the parking outside of that, whether there be parties or whatever, which I don't have a problem with. But if you see, how is that going to have an impact on the water flow? And so we haven't seen anything with regards to how they're going to allow the water flow to come out. I'm on 230, is that a grade below the actual property you're looking at?
Okay, you think we'll have the applicant respond to that?
Okay.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak?
Brandon Herring, 232 Orange Lake, right next to us, see if there. I just want to also corroborate this. Our property had previously flooded. We have some mitigations in place, but have similar concerns about water runoff from that property. And in particular, want to make sure that the foliage that's separating the properties is maintained during the construction so that that can help mitigate this challenge.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? I'll close the public hearing and have the applicant respond to the comments from the public.
Oops, wrong way. Getting ahead of myself there.
The, this is the high point of the property. All of this, of course, because the water's down here, everything slopes down in this direction. This whole side of the house is going to be, you know, walkout over here. And by code, of course, we are not allowed to let water leave our property and go on through the adjoining property. There will be a whole grading plan, there will be a review with, and she's nodding yes, that will require us to mitigate that. And once again, we're only 5% lot coverage. We have a very large lot. This, there's parking for eight spaces in front here, which is not an extraordinarily large number considering parking on the street is really not desirable in this area. It's not a street you park on. So we think, and again, once we submit plans for permit, the civil engineer will have a plan in place to make sure that this is mitigated. Make sure that the water is either contained on the property or is, you know, shed into appropriate areas. So we assure them that this will be taken care of. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure every drink, is it only 5% of the property, that lot is going to be built on?
Yes. The building footprint is 5% of the lot coverage. Where, like, I think it's 25 or 30, I can't remember.
Again, it's a very unusual, if you look at the shape of the lot.
Right.
It's got the, it's very unusual shape, so.
And actually, just something I would like to say, which is catty if I can.
Sure.
So really, this is just before us because the, it's bigger than the house, is that right?
Yep, as it's referencing, when you have accessory structure, it can't be more than 50% of the ground floor. So by, based on the calculations, that's why they're before you. So it's, it's a permitted activity, it's just that the percentage to the existing is what has caused them to come before you.
Right, it's not, it's like 65% of the footprint of the house where 50% is allowed. So it's not bigger than the house, it's just bigger than what's allowed.
And I guess to talk myself out of the flooding concern, in theory, you could have built an even bigger house.
Right.
Which would have created more impermeable surfaces, so, okay, thank you.
So we addressed all the questions and is it time for a motion?
I'll make a motion. In regards to the appeal at 228 Orange Lake Drive for the proposed accessory structure of an attached garage exceeding 50% of the ground floor area of the main building, I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standard for practical difficulty because compliance with the stric letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the unique shape and size of the lot. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because of the orientation of where the garage is. There is also, and you know, there was concerns about flooding, but it appears that that is going to be something that will be addressed from the township as well as from the builder. Unique circumstances with the property, again, because of the unique shape of the lot, it makes it very difficult to put a garage anywhere else. As well as we all know that with the number of cars and lot families, you probably do need that much space. And they are only using 5% of the property of the lot as well. And because of that, it is not self-created. If approved, the motion must include, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you. This really hasn't been so bad because my brain still says it's 9:07, not 10:00.
Okay. Good for you. Yes, awesome.
My name is Lindsay Deja and I'm here to talk about 42934 Woodward Avenue, Sharkies Cuts for Kids and the exterior sign that we have proposed. I'm with Sinorama National Branding. And what we have proposed is actually the shark logo is exceeding the 5% that's allowed for the sign. And I did notice that there's a typo. It says the square footage is only 2% of the sign and it's actually a little over 5, so I do want to note that. But we did also install the Davida Kidney Care Sign right next door and that V was approved by your board in 2022. But the Sharkies Cuts for Kids is actually a trademarked logo that I submitted the trademark paperwork to your team as well for. That was trademarked back in 2020 and we've been installing their signs since 2018. They're throughout the US, Canada, Europe, the Middle East. And we create their signs and install close to 30 locations nationally for them. There's also a location in Michigan in Livonia, so it's definitely, the shark is present throughout the community and the customers that the kids like to see.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? I'll open this to the public for comment. Anyone like to comment? Close public hearing and bring it back for a motion.
I'll make a motion here at, with regards to the appeal, 42934 Woodward Avenue for the sign exceeding 5% of the sign area. I move that it be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant demonstrated all standard for practical difficulty. Compliance with the stric letter on the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. We did hear a little bit about the logo, the trademark logo, but I would also add that being on Woodward Avenue requires sometimes a larger sign because of the speeds on that, on that road. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbor by reason of the fact that it's a commercial property and the neighbors have similar signs. This is unique, the property is unique and it's been demonstrated given its commercial nature and again, its location on Woodward Avenue. This is not self-created due to the reasons stated. I will add that you have to get your permits within one year and obtain them prior to installation.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Sorry, I thought you had handouts. I thought you had handouts.
Oh, no.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Bradford Egan. I'm with 814 Services. We're at 1695 12 Mile Road in Berkeley. I'm here tonight to request a dimensional variance for the playground area, section For the play area, the dimensional variance would allow for the playground area to be 9,402 square feet from the 20,200 square feet as required by ordinance, which is 100 square feet per child. This dimensional variance is necessary to create a safe, accessible play area directly adjacent to the facility building, which allows staff to supervise children properly and always maintain and remain close to the facility. Additionally, children are allowed access to the play area on a scheduled time. The schedule permits only a limited number of children on the play area to allow for proper supervision and child safety. As part of my submission for this evening, this evening's meeting, I was requested to provide some locations in Michigan for Primrose Schools as well as some locations in surrounding states. I don't know if you want to go through all of them, however, most of them are under the, well, they're all under the 20,000 number, but just as a, for instance, we were just approved in the city of Novi for an 8,945 square foot play area for essentially the same size building of 13,546 square feet and their ordinance requested 30,300 square Additionally, I have some information on the fire procedure, exit procedure for the school. It's, it's pretty comprehensive, which we can certainly go through if you'd like, but they do have a comprehensive plan to get not only children in a fire drill situation, but also obviously a real life situation and what they would do. Primrose Schools' primary competitors was requested of me. Goddard is one. They have five open locations, one under construction in the Michigan market. Secondary competitors include a company called TLE and then there's Kinder Care and Child Time. I was requested for, to submit the scheduled play policy and procedures. In our site layout, there are three individual playgrounds for gross motor play. Equipment has been specifically designed for their age group utilizing the playground space. Our classroom schedules are designed to allow flexibility for a school to set up for each classroom to have individual time on their designated playground. Schedules are posted in the classrooms for those times. Our infant group or program is designed around the individual child's schedule, so at any given time, that playground space may have as few as one child or up to eight children outside. Our toddler program could have up to 12 children for one classroom at any given time. Our early preschool and pathways program could have up to 16 children for one classroom in their design space.
So what would be the maximum number of children outside?
That's my next line. Our preschool could have up to 20 children, pre-kindergarten could have up to 24. Given the class rotations and numbers provided above, this represents a maximum total of 44 children at any one time on the entire playground. And that is from Ben Cook, who is the senior director of campus design for Primrose Schools.
All right, so the staff talked to me about this because the variance is significant. So we have a 1974 ordinance that requires 100 square feet per children. Their maximum is 200, that's where they came up with the 20,000. So they have 9,400 square feet there. The reason that's better than the property of the south is it's safer, right? So it's away from telegraph. The staff also checked other communities. Troy says you need 1,000 square feet if you meet the state requirement, state daycare requirements is 1,200 square feet, you know, regardless of the number. West Bloomfield has a requirement of 150 square feet per child. Other ordinances are 1,000 or 5,000. So I guess I was just thinking, my own experience, 100 square feet for a child is, area is a lot, a lot of space. So it, it seems like the 74 ordinance might be a bit excessive, so therefore, I, I think what they're requesting is reasonable, particularly if you take into account that it's safer there. And we talked about using the area to the south, that's not part of their lease, the owner of the property would have to agree to that and I guess for all the other reasons, I think.
Wait, can you see that last part again about the lease?
So they're only leasing what you see there, so they're, the, the...
But they own the whole property.
The, the property is being shown as one parcel. So the entire parcel is for the, the school user as of right now. The reason that makes the, the southern property a little less desirable for play area, one, M dot requires where the drive aisle goes, so that kind of puts a natural separator in between, right down the center of the, of the lot. So if any play area was put on the south side of the lot, it would be away from the school and would, would be an issue for child safety and, and being adjacent to the school if anything were to happen.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, maybe to, to add a little more background for the rest of the ZBA members. So this was before us originally, we approved variance, I think had something to do with like a fence or a wall. It went to the Board of Trustees. Then at that point, we recognized that it fell outside of the ordinance, which requires this additional space for the children to play. The concern that came up after that meeting is that, so when it was presented to us, this is one lot, but the idea was that potentially, and I think they were forthcoming, that maybe we would do something with it later on. Is that fair?
There's always the possibility and we did have a marketing sign on the property that we have taken down. Initially, we had put up the marketing sign because the senior living center behind it was up for sale. We were approached by gentlemen that were going to buy it and in conjunction with that, they wanted to purchase the southern portion of the lot so that they would have a better view into their space. That didn't go through. We neglected to take the sign down unfortunately, but it has been taken down since.
So essentially, the concern was that the, the land technically is there for them to accommodate the space that's required under the ordinance. And there was a feeling, and I appreciate what you're saying now, but there was a feeling, and I'll just say, you know, to be candid, that maybe there was a little sort of like misleading because they're saying, we're not going to develop it and we're going to leave it and then it became, well, it's up for sale and are you, you know, maybe you shouldn't be selling it because you need it for what you're trying to do with Primrose and needing the additional, you know, land for the kids. So I will just, yeah, I just wanted to add that background.
Yeah, so then one of the other things I threw out was the variance is only good so long as it, you know, then they have to come back, you know, for another variance that they develop that property, but that didn't seem to be balancing everything. It seems like there's enough space, it's safer there, you know, I guess that's another issue as to what happens to the rest of the property. But I was on the impression, isn't there a franchisee? Isn't there a lease?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so the franchisee leases that portion.
They will lease that, yes, they will lease that development from us.
Right. And so that's what the franchisee needs in order to run their daycare.
The playground that we're showing, the highlighted area, is more than sufficient. As the Director of Ground Design had stated, from Primrose, they'll only have a maximum of 44 students, which by ordinance, if you extrapolate that out, it would be 4,400 square feet and we're proposing 9,400 square feet.
Okay. So I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't, basically, the daycare will not have more than 44?
There will be more students than 44, but there'll never be more than 44 students on the playground at any one time.
Gotcha, okay.
Per their schedule.
Okay. So I'll open this to the public for comment?
You pass.
Sure, okay. Close the public hearing and bring it back.
My only question would be, Patty, could we limit, could we say if it's approved, there can only be, you know, 45 kids at a time?
Well, it's part of the presentation that's, that has been provided, so you certainly could reference it, you know, as presented, meaning that it was presented, that it was, you know, based on their playground operational plan.
But it's technically like 90 something at a time that they can have under the ordinance.
Right, exactly. But I, and I like that because that is sort of granting the variance if we're so inclined, but then you still have, you know, the kids still have the space that Bloomfield would like them to have, so. Okay, I can make a motion if...
Awesome.
Okay. So with regard to this dimensional variance, right, for the deficient outdoor play area in accordance with section 42, 4.14, I move that it be approved because we, the applicant demonstrated practical difficulty, compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the lot location on telegraph and the safety of the children wanting to be near to the building, the school, the daycare building. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that, we haven't heard any opposition tonight, and is there going to be screening over there?
There's screening on every bit of fencing that's going to be on the property.
So also no, no injustice because of that screening. The unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, again, given its location on a heavily trafficked area and in a commercial area where there are going to be children playing, so there is safety concerns. This is not self-created due to the reasons stated above. I'm going to add that all permits should be made within one year and must be obtained prior to construction. And I guess I'll just emphasize, approved as presented at the meeting, so.
Support.
We'll have, you know, that number of kids as it was presented.
So I have a motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience.
I appreciate you guys toughening it out tonight.
Well, what, there's no other choice?
What choice?
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
No.
Oh, that's right, we got to discuss the ordinance.
Thank you.
Sorry?
And I'll do it very briefly because I know you all read it and are very, actually, you are more familiar with it than the planning commission. So we have taken a look at, you know, the more recent activity with the ZBA and as you've heard more recently, over the last several years, that the specifications for ground mounted mechanicals have changed for a variety of reasons and you've always, you have heard that it's the specs that lead to a applicant coming before you because they can't comply with the manufacturer's specification. So we're presenting a, an ordinance amendment that still is insisting that ground mounted mechanicals be adjacent to the building it's being served, but clarifying that there are circumstances that that, that immediacy might not be as we are, that we would think and that there has to be some clearance for air circulation, access and so forth from the building. So we, we have presented language to the planning commission. They have a public hearing next Monday, which they're going to be considering the language presented, that ground mounted mechanical equipment shall be located immediately adjacent to the residential or non-residential building and have a clearance of no more than five feet from the building intended to be served. The other part of this proposal also, which is similar to your more recent request tonight, is that ground mounted mechanical equipment may be located inside an accessory structure that complies with the requirements of accessory structure provisions, meaning that pool equipment inside a pool house, generator inside of a garage, you know, those are examples of the board routinely approving those type of applications that come before you. And again, more recently, even with the placement of these ground mounted mechanicals within, you know, five feet of the building, those two have been routinely approved. And just looking over last year, that would have eliminated 16 variances that would have been come before you if we would have adopted it a year ago. So we are trying to stay current and stay contemporary with information that we're getting from our inspectors, feedback from our contractors and obviously actions by the board. So if the board would like to convey any comments regarding the, the draft language, I would certainly forward that on to the planning commission at their public hearing on Monday.
Yeah, thanks for bringing this and I am in support of the change.
Yeah, conceptually, I mean, it's, makes a lot of sense.
Totally happy with the five foot.
That's fine, that's very reasonable.
Great, we will add that into the minutes and make sure that the board receives that. So thank you. Now I'm done.
So we have a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
And support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, the meeting is over.
Aye, aye, aye.